I want to welcome everyone to the Amherst School Committee meeting. It is Thursday, January 18th, 2024. I'll call the meeting to order at 6:30 PM. I need to take the roll to make sure everyone can, who is joining remotely, can hear us and be heard. Irv Rhodes?
Present.
Deb Leonard?
Present.
Jennifer Chau?
Present.
Bridget Hines?
Present.
And Sarah Marshall, that's me, I am here, so, great. Just to note that this meeting was originally scheduled for Tuesday of this week and was postponed due to snow. All right, so our first order of business, I believe, is to approve minutes, and we have two sets. So if we could look first at minutes from October 10th of 2023. Only two people on this committee were there at the time, so I rely on Irv and Jennifer to tell us if there should be any corrections, amendments to those minutes.
Sorry, I looked earlier and I only saw the January minutes, so I didn't see the October minutes, and now...
Well, they're not in attachment, they're this, it's in the detailed agenda, I just learned this, there's a little, like a clock.
Gotcha.
Okay. If, if we're not prepared...
And you may need to log in to see it.
Yep.
Yeah.
Log in, I can see it.
Okay.
I can see it, but, oh, there it goes, thank you.
If you... Okay, but there. Irv, have you had a chance to read those minutes?
Yes, I have, and I, I don't have any corrections or comments.
Okay. Jennifer, do you want us to wait while you look, or should we?
Yeah, just, if you just give me thirty seconds, that'd be great.
Okay. Sure.
I do see, I do see an error in the January minutes.
Oh, we're not there yet.
Oh, okay.
We're doing this...
Yeah. All right, perfect. Where's the clock, I don't see, I just see the January now, too.
So you have to be logged in.
Oh, you have to log in, okay.
I'm ready, I, I don't know if everyone has...
Okay, Jennifer, do you have any corrections noted? All right. So we need to vote to accept the minutes, and I will rely on Irv and Jennifer's. If they vote aye, I will vote aye. So may I have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes for October 10th, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Any more discussion? All right, if you're, I'll call the motion, all those, while I have to take a roll call. Irv, how do you vote?
Yes.
Deb?
Abstain.
Abstain, okay. Jen?
Yes.
Excuse me, Jennifer. Bridget?
Um, yeah, I'll trust my colleagues, yes.
And I will also vote yes. So the minutes of October 10th, 2023 are accepted with four votes in favor and one abstention. All right, so now the minutes from January 9th, which I drafted because they were quick. Does anyone have any, I've, I've, I noted that I need to insert a parenthesis, closed parenthesis, in the first paragraph under B. But does anybody have any other comments? Thank you, Doug. Yes?
Thank you for generating the minutes, it's very helpful. In the future, if you should generate them again, I do go by Jennifer.
Now I know, so, yes, I will make that correction.
Yeah, you don't need to correct these, but just for the future reference.
Well, okay. I'll try to remember, anything else? And does, do people care if they're addressed by their first names or last names, either in the minutes or at the meeting, in the meeting, no?
We've generally done first names.
Okay. Bridget, did you have a comment on the minutes?
I think minutes are fine.
Okay. Thank you. Irv, do you have any comments on the minutes of January 9th?
None whatsoever.
All right, then can I have a motion?
I move to accept the minutes from the January 9th meeting.
Second.
All right, I, so we'll vote on the motion, I will vote aye. Bridget?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
And Irv?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, just remind me who, if I'm supposed to, if we're supposed to record this, who moved and seconded the first item minutes? Was it Jennifer and Irv?
I moved.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. All right, so moving on, we have our public comment period. Yes, I just wanted to ask the superintendent, does it matter whether we show the written ones first or, or hear from people? Or person first?
Usually people do, we do in the room first.
In the room first?
And then we do voicemail and then written.
Okay.
But order's entirely up to you guys.
Okay, I'm happy to invite anyone in the room to come forward to speak for not more than three minutes. And I've got, I'll just use my phone here. So would you please state your name and your town of residence?
Yes, good evening, my name is Alyssa Pierce Bonifas, I live in Amherst. I wanted to welcome all of you new members to our school committee. I have lived in Amherst for over seventeen years. My daughter is born and raised here in the public schools. She's a eleventh grader now, but she has been coming to school committee meetings since she was three, pushing for bilingual, dual language programs, which I can happily say thank you to many people on the school committee, including Irv, Professor Irv Rhodes, who was part of the committee way back when, in 2007, when we were pushing for Cominantes and dual language to happen. It did finally happen, and I just wanted to remind the committee that it's strong people like yourselves with, with convictions for the interest in having our populace speak two languages that has made it possible for the Cominantes program to flourish here in Amherst. And I am now a lucky teacher in the Cominantes ESL, part of the E, of the program, at Fort River. And I work with the founding group, which is the fourth graders now, they started in kindergarten, and they're now in fourth grade. And as an educator and a parent, I just wanted to come in and share with you the things that I see every day as this clear vision of what we wanted for Amherst, which is that this university town would have a universe of languages and cultures that were embraced as part of the curriculum. I work with the fourth graders who seamlessly work in English and Spanish. It doesn't matter whether they were born in Puerto Rico or El Salvador, or from the United States. They easily go through both languages, which is a dream to experience. I also notice that these students are so proud of where they come from, where their family comes from, that as their ESL teacher, they're constantly asking me, "Miss, can I talk about Puerto Rico? Could I tell them about all the games they play there? Can I talk about the holidays? Can I talk about the food?" And you don't always get that in a regular ESL classroom, where most of the time children are trying to shy away from anything different and want to be like their peers. This is what we're bringing to fruition here in Amherst. So I'm just here to say how much I love this program, how so happy I am that people on this committee over the years have pushed for this to happen, it is happening. I will tell you, we are going to need your continued support, and it's growing to the point where we need opportunities for our kids to speak other languages outside of the school. The school teachers are so good at what they do, but they can't be the only people that the kids listen to every day in this language. We need leisure services, to have coaches who speak in other languages and have sports in different languages. We need extramurials, is that the word, intramural sports?
I'm sorry, spend three minutes, can you finish?
Thank you for your time, and I look forward to all the great activities that you guys are going to do on the council.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Made it just in time.
Yes, please give us your name and tell us where you live.
Okay, my name is Molly Cooksey, I live in Shootsberry, and I am one of the kindergarten teachers for the Cominantes program at Fort River. This is my third year, the fifth year of the program, and I love being a part of Cominantes. It is my dream job in so many ways. We get to work with such amazing kids and families who come from all over the world, who have so much to contribute to our program, to our community, and it is really special to see them celebrate their different backgrounds and to focus on a cultural exchange rather than just assimilation. I think that's something that is so beautiful, and I wish every child got to experience that. I want to speak tonight especially on behalf of my Spanish teaching counterparts. I work on the English side, I do teach one section of the day in Spanish, and I just want to express my pride and reverence for the work that they do. I think something that is going to be, has been important, is going to be really important moving forward, is that we pay particular attention to the resources and equity that we are providing specifically between our Spanish and English sides. So for example, I have sixteen kids in one of my groups. During a literacy time, I'll have an ELL teacher, a reading interventionist, myself, my paraprofessional, and sometimes another literacy specialist or another person coming in to support my students, access their literacy education in English. While on the other side, we now have a Spanish-language literacy specialist working with students in small groups. But then aside from that, we have the classroom teacher and the paraprofessional. And so as we add another grade next year, fifth grade, which was, that was the initial goal, really being cognizant of the funding and the resources that we need to allocate to make equity real, not just adding on classroom teachers. But if we want our students to truly be academically proficient in that second or additional language, what does that look like on the Spanish side? If we compare to other schools in other districts that are doing this, like Holyoke or New Bedford or Southington, those are communities where a lot of people in the outer community speak Spanish. They're going to the store and they're hearing Spanish. They're going down the street, they're hearing Spanish, their good friends speak Spanish. That isn't always the case for a lot of our families in Amherst, where English continues to be the dominant social language. And so how are we supporting our Spanish teachers to be giving that academic and that social rigor? Thank you. It can't look exactly the same, it might even need to look like more resources. And so as we look at what that looks like on paper, please be aware of what we're, what we're dealing with there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak? No, okay. If Doug is showing the written public comments, or will, in a moment.
Pull those up?
I'm sorry?
I just need to pull them up, hang on.
Yeah. And someone, there were only two, and one of them may, perhaps is something I needn't include, and so I need other people's advice.
See how that's presenting?
There. The first one is in, just an announcement from a literacy, literacy group about materials being available to educators, so I don't know if this is the sort of thing that should be brought to the meeting, but didn't want to leave, Jennifer?
Was the subject school committee public comment?
Yes.
I mean, that's our practice, is if it's sent to the SE public comment email, and if it says public comment in the, in the subject, then we include it.
Right, I didn't know if there was ever basically spam coming to...
I think that would be your call.
Yeah. And I don't know if educators are already aware of this program, but... And then one from a resident. All right, that's it, and there were no voicemails. So before we hear the superintendent's update, I'd just like to run through what I hope we can be the timing for this evening, so we can finish in two and a half hours, finish at nine o'clock. I'm hoping we can begin the new and continuing business by 7:10. I mean, this is, this is just my rough schedule, of course, we can alter it. I figured, estimated we could have thirty minutes for the Cominantes program update, then forty minutes for the budget presentation, ten minutes for the sixth grade move to middle school. All right, but we'll see how it goes. Oops, excuse me.
Your three minutes are up.
All right, yes, I know, I don't know, I've started it, now I don't know how to make it stop. Okay.
Are you ready?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you.
So just a couple of things. The first piece of, of news for the committee, and it relates to, to this meeting tonight, but it also just generally is a piece of information. My good friend and colleague Sasha Figaro is leaving the district. Her last day at work will be Friday. And so we appreciate all the work she's done over the years for the district and, and supporting whoever's in the role of superintendent and, and others in the district, and so I just wanted to appreciate her, her work over the years and, and embarrass her a little bit by mentioning her at a meeting. The other thing I'll note is Debbie Westmoreland is going to be filling in and helping out in that regard, so she's going to take on some of those tasks and responsibilities in the short term. Ms. Westmoreland is actually tuned in tonight and, and taking minutes via remote, so you don't have to. So nonetheless, two things there, just if you're, if you're writing to me and wanting, you know, to, to get connection with me, I think it's often a good idea to also include Ms. Westmoreland. And then, and then of course, you know, she'll be helping us out with things like minutes and other, other things. So I think just to, to start getting in the habit of, of including Debbie on, on, on correspondence is, is a helpful thing. So the second thing that I'll, I'll mention, and, and I'll ask Ms. Leonard to, to chime in if she has better recollection of this particulars, because I know she was at the meeting, the elementary school building committee met last week, I want to say Friday. It's a bit of a blur with the snow day this week. And discussed, you know, the progress of the, of the project to date. What's coming up as a sort of next, sort of major step is the submission of the sixty percent construction design documents to the state. It's a very formal process, you know, sixty percent is not, you know, necessarily six out of ten, it's, it's a, a sort of standard progression that they do as far as, you know, documentation and, and notification to the state. And, and so that, I believe, is, is, I've seen correspondence this week, and so that's on, on track for submission. And so we're continuing through our process in a timely way. Things that are coming up relative to the elementary school building committee and, and their actions. So one thing that will be starting, our first meeting will be the end of next week, is some playground design. So one of the playground spaces is a smooth surface. We're still doing some investigation of what that surface will be. There was an option that came forward that was of interest, that, that we want to explore a little bit. It's very, very new in the United States, and it's just a new product generally, so I think there's a lot of trepidation by designers and some of those folks around a product that new. And so it's, it's, you know, the advice of, of the full committee to the designers was to, to take a serious look at this in a, in a fairly quick order of time to, to see if it would be a viable option for us, you know, sort of what are the risks, benefit trade-offs, that sort of thing, for that type of surface. But on top of that surface is playground equipment, and we want it to be as accessible as possible. And so I've, I've snagged a few folk, I say snagged, I asked a few folks from the schools, a couple of parents are involved. The town will have a couple of people that will be participating in this, and so we'll meet, our first meeting will be the 26th, and then we'll have two other meetings, at least, hopefully not too, too much more than that, to kind of go through and, and try to get a sense of what's the right combination of things, it's going to fit on this space. And, you know, there'll be, you know, obviously there are financial limitations, but it's also about what's a good place base, what's an appropriate accessible place base. And so one of the things with, with this kind of surface is that, you know, for kids that have mobility impairments of any sort, their ability to sort of get to, interact and play in those spaces will be seamless, is the idea, or as seamless as can be made possible. And so that's part of it, is the transitions from hardscapes like, you know, blacktop concrete surfaces to the, to the place base will be, you know, zero...
Grade, yeah, zero entry.
Entry, right, and, and the thing about these kind of surfaces also, because they're on structures that kids climb on, is that then you're looking at an appropriate level of, of impact cushioning. So if, if any of you have been to the, the place base in Kendrick Park, that's that type of softer surface that's, that has that mobility advantage, and it has some cushion. So if you were to come off and, you know, take a fall, it'll help prevent some of those injuries. So that's, those are the, you know, some of the things with different surface materials as to how much, you know, impactability they have, which then influences sort of what piece of equipment you choose. And, you know, but it also plays into questions of permeability, so that plays into permitting questions around, you know, the, the site and, and our conservation commission and, you know, permitting and licensing that we have to do along the way. So all this stuff is simultaneously taking place, it's all still on track and on time. And, and, you know, I'm looking forward to, I somewhat hinted that it's sort of like shopping for gifts to be looking at something like this, because it's, it's, it's a circumstance where you're trying to think of what's, you know, the best space we can kind of come up with for, for kids that are going to be at this, at this, at this facility. And, and it's the day, every day with, with the kids that attend school there, but, you know, when school's not in session, it's still a place base that kids in our community use, and so we want it to be a, a functional and, and useful space for anyone that comes to our community, wants to, wants to leverage that space. I may defer a little bit to, to Ms. Leonard, she was, you know, not officially a member of the committee on, on Friday, and if the town council did what it should have done, which I think it did, I didn't hear otherwise, that you will be for the next meeting.
They haven't done it yet.
They haven't met yet. But I don't know if you had anything else that you wanted to offer relative to that meeting and, and work that we do, or have done there?
I was going to do that during the school committee updates.
Sounds good.
But I could do it now, if that's better.
It's up to, I don't have anything else on superintendent's update, so...
Okay, that was my question.
Those are, those are the only things I had.
Then perhaps you would give your update only now, so we can ask the two of you.
Um, yeah, so brand new to the, this whole process, I did a ton as a member of the public. I, I don't think I really have a whole lot to add, I guess I wasn't a hundred percent clear on the two, well, on, on the conservation committee's concerns about poured rubber, and was that denied? Or were they asked just to explore it further?
My reading of the memo and understanding of the circumstance was the following. So when they went to the conservation commission, because there was another surface that potentially we could explore as an option, and its permeability is different than what we were expecting to do, we simply asked for them to approve and hold, and sort of carve out an exception for that to be decided later. And so we were going to come back to them for the sort of final step of the process, but, but I think, my understanding of their action was that, that they approved contingent upon this last piece that we'll come back to them with, because it, you know, depending on which you choose, it may influence what they make for recommendations of things we have to do in order to, to get the, the full level of permitting.
Okay, so, yeah, that was, that was a question I had. I guess the cost estimates are at or below budget, so everybody's happy about that. What else, the playground committee, is it a subcommittee or is it just a group?
I think it's a working group, it's the official title.
A working group.
A working group.
Working group.
And then I think everything looks like it's on track. I think they were planning on giving the school committee an update in March, but I could not find the spreadsheet that had those dates on it, so I will look for that.
Yeah, the, the spreadsheet that, the Margaret, who's our, part of our OPM. I think that's one she owns, it's not actually part of the, the other ones that have sort of the, what's sometimes called a Gantt chart or a timeline are, are much, much smaller print.
Yeah.
And much, much harder to read, and they don't contain the details. So she has a, she has a chart that she shares, that talks about sort of prime, you know, sort of major points in the process that, and, and it, it's a working document even during the meeting, she's editing some aspects of it, so I think it's a, it's a very simplified document. We, we maybe should ask if she could share that with us periodically, because I, I think that would be helpful, because it's a little easier to read.
But I guess the big things that I got from the document was that things are on progress and in progress. And... There was another thought, but I lost it. Oh, there'll be an issue with traffic as they begin construction, they'll have to work with the town, that's all I got.
Thank you, okay. Any members have questions on the building project or anything else the superintendent raised? Yes, Jennifer?
I'm sad to hear that Sasha's leaving, thank you for letting us know, she's always been super...
She's always been super responsive and great to work with. So you're saying Debbie Westmoreland is going to fill in for her tasks on a short-term basis? Debbie's already quite busy? I think so. What's the mid slash long-term plan for backfilling for Sasha?
I think that's a good question, because, and I don't have an answer to it, to be perfectly honest. I think there's a, you know, we're searching for a new superintendent, who they have as that executive assistant is pretty critical to their work, and that we might want to allow them to sort of find that person that suits them. So I think we're going to be trying to balance workloads in the short term until, if it's a circumstance where we're not keeping up in a noticeable way, and please provide that feedback if you're not getting that, you know, we may task other staff that we have, or seek someone temporarily to provide some additional support. So I think, you know, in the immediate, we'll try to manage with the folks we've got, and, you know, Debbie can farm out some of her tasks to some other folks that are providing, you know, sort of clerical support in the central office, hopefully, and, but, like I say, if you're noticing certain things not kind of getting attended to in a way that they need to be, then let us know, for sure.
Anyone else?
I just had a question, I guess, with the elementary school building committee. Like, what's the relationship between this committee we send a representative, but they're making the decisions about these different pieces that we're talking about, like things like playground surface or other things, and how, you know, how does that intersect with the work we do?
So, I think there's a couple of ways. And remind me, I want to make one other quick comment about transportation in a second, or changes to traffic flow in a moment. But, so, the representatives on that committee are, you know, are ones that vote, and it is empowered with authority to make decisions. And so, the important thing is to convey to both myself and Ms. Leonard anything in particular that you, you know, want us to share with the committee and as they take up different topics, that sort of thing. And so, I think that we had made a formal decision about the playground surface, it's a thing called port in place, you know, and weighing the sort of give and take of the different things, you know, accessibility, you know, durability, environmental impact, you know, all those things, you know, it's a, there's no perfect choice for that particular thing. We'd made that, we subsequently, in a vote we took at the meeting, opened up the consideration of this other material, which is a cork-based material. And I think there's just due diligence that's going to happen, and then we'll have to then, you know, sort of either affirm what we already voted or otherwise. But I think as we go through the next steps, and there are, you know, actual steps that we need to take, it's important for this committee to provide, you know, feedback to both myself and Ms. Leonard about, you know, the sort of point of view, and if there are things that we should discuss on the agenda that before those meetings happen. At the present time, that group is meeting about once a month over the next few months. You know, a lot of the aspects that we're in at this moment are pretty, I would say, technical and sort of formal in their process and steps. There are going to be decisions about, you know, final decisions around, like paint colors, and, I mean, we had, you know, a meeting about that a little bit, but, you know, we'll make some more fundamental choices around some of those kind of things coming up in the next few months. And so, what I would suggest is that on the Town of Amherst website, if you go to their committees pages, the elementary school building committee is there, and that lists all the agendas and packets of material and that sort of, and they're good about getting those things posted in, you know, certainly within the 48-hour window, but, you know, and it's worth, you know, digging into that timeline and looking a little more closely at some of that, and seeing where those decision points are. I haven't done that to myself yet either, but that's a way for you guys as a group, if there are things that you're particularly interested in conveying a message, you know, and a point of view, then, and want to have a discussion as a committee about it, then knowing what that timeline's like and when those points are, is going to be pretty critical. I mean, I'll certainly make the commitment to try to inform you guys of any sort of major things that are coming up, and I think, you know, your colleague here will do the same.
Thank you. I wanted to tell, Bridget, maybe to the first part of your question, that MSBA tells the town in the school how to conduct this project, and establishes the elementary school building committee, and defines who is on it, basically, that it's, you know, so many town councillors and principals and members of the public, and they have the charge, they're the ones that interact with MSBA. So they call the shots about the composition, how that committee is constituted.
If I may add one other thing, so around the question of, and I think I've mentioned this before, so we're on time and on track with our, with the project, and so, the first order of business at the site is to do some earthwork, to essentially raise the level of the ground. And so, in that process, the, there's two driveways currently into that, into Fort River. There's a southern one and a northern one, northern one's near Main Street, southern one's near College slash Belchertown Road. Those will be changing in a few different ways over the coming couple of months, and so the expectation is that during the month of March, the request for bids will go out for that earthwork, and that if that process is successful, either late March or early April, they'll start doing that work. And as we begin to approach that, we're going to, you know, begin messaging out the particulars of how traffic flow and whatnot is going to happen in that space. I have a meeting, I want to say Tuesday of next week with the town, where we're going to talk about the sort of public street aspect of that. We've had a meeting about some of the traffic flow and ideas around that for onsite. It's going to be a pretty significant change, and there's going to be pretty significant limitations to the spaces. I will, you know, say that, and I think we hinted in the newsletter, and we'll continue to deliver in the newsletter updates around any and all topics, this being one of the major ones that's coming up for the whole school community. So that section, just below the sort of narrative at the beginning of the report, that has news and notes about things like superintendent search, or principal searches, or et cetera, we'll also have updates about that as we, you know, roll that out and seek to inform people of how things are going to change and what, how it's going to work, and we'll go from there.
Great, thank you. All right, so I have a couple of updates. One, you all know that, assuming the meeting is properly noticed, that we will, this committee will meet with the Pelham and regional school committees an hour before next week's regional school committee meeting, to meet with the superintendent consultant. And we will be the stakeholders that they interview, basically, all right? Second, I did notify the town manager about our appointments to committees such as the elementary school building committee. The council meets on Monday, but the only appointment I saw that had been submitted was Deb's, so I'll find out about the appointments to JCPC and BCG. Secondly, I will be signing, and I think Doug will also be signing, an amendment to the funding agreement with MSBA for the new elementary school, to reflect the additional $9.7 million that they're giving us. So very happy to do that. Doug, I'll need to speak with you about exactly how and where that happens. I don't know where I go, or if this is physical signing, or electronic, or what, so.
I was going to check with the town manager myself on that topic, because I printed a copy in case I needed to sign one and drop it off, but it very well could be an electronic signature, so I'd say keep an eye on your email, but I'll check with him and let you know what it says.
I sent him a note, so I was assuming we'd hear back from the owner's project manager. Answer first. Also, I want to tell you that, because I am also an associate member of the zoning board of appeals, and the school project will be coming before the zoning board of appeals next week for a very small, small matter, I'm told, and I'm going to be on that panel. So I spoke with the, an attorney in the state ethics commission today about whether that's any kind of conflict, and the answer is no, because they're both public bodies acting in the public, in Amherst's interest. But I will be filing an appearance of conflict form, just so everybody's aware. This committee, as we see, is not intimately involved in this process really at all, except through our representative on the elementary school building committee. But, anyway, I just wanted to let you all know that. That's all my announcements, I think. Are there any other updates from school committee? Jennifer?
First, I just wanted to say, Sarah, regarding the JCPC and the BCG, I believe those committee assignments don't need to be approved by the town council, the same way that the elementary school building committee member needs to be approved by the town council. So I wouldn't expect it to see it on the town agenda. We would just need to notify the chairs of those two committees who the Amherst School Committee representatives are.
Well, I had done that, and then the town manager said he needed to know, so I'm just confused, yeah.
Maybe the town manager needs to know, but I don't think the town council needs to vote on it. Thank you.
All right, well, I've told everybody, I've told everybody.
Everyone knows. Thank you. I do have one announcement, which is the regional school committee and the Union 26 committee are going to be, are currently in the process of doing a superintendent search. The search firm is going to be holding community input sessions, they actually have held several this week. There are going to be four, five, next week, and these sessions are designed for the members of the public to give input on what they're looking for in a superintendent. So the same four questions get asked at every session. So it's what's great about living in this area, what's great about your school district, what should the new superintendent, what are the challenges the new superintendent will face, and what characteristics would you like to see in the next superintendent? So the same four questions get asked at every session. The search firm will then summarize all the input and present it to the regional school committee and Union 26. So next week, there are sessions on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday at 7:00 PM, on Saturday at 10:30 in the middle school library, and there's going to be a Spanish language session on Sunday at 2:30 at University Village Conference Center. And you can find all this information on the ARPS website at arps.org/suptsearch, arps.org/subtsearch. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more updates from committee members? No? All right, then to our new business, the first item is the update on the Caminantes program. Welcome, please tell us your name as you start.
This is, microphone is intimidating.
But you need to be close to it. You could put it to the side, you could, like this.
Pretty close, is that?
Yeah.
Great.
Just let me know when you want to move the slides along.
Thank you.
Once I get them displayed.
Okay. Great, so, good evening. My name is Katie Richardson. I'm the multilingual education administrator for Amherst and the regional public schools, and I'm really happy to be here tonight to talk about Caminantes. Thank you for the opportunity to share what we've been doing. The goal for this presentation is to give an update on how the program is functioning now, our successes, our challenges, and our needs going forward. And I'll also share a little bit of background information for some context about how we came to start a dual-language program. I hope to move through the presentation fairly quickly so that we can have more of a conversation. That will be a little bit of a challenge for me, but I will do my best. So first, I'd like to offer a little background information about why the program was started. So a combination of demographic changes, English learner opportunity gaps, and community interest led the district to begin the program in 2019. The first graph shows that the number of Latinx students in the Amherst schools has been growing over the last 10 years, as has the number of Spanish-speaking students. When we began discussing the dual-language program in, I guess, 2017, 18, the data we were looking at was from 2007 through 17, and we were seeing a 30% increase in Latinx students and a 35% increase in ELL students. The following graph shows that the majority of our English learners are Spanish-speaking, and so we continue to see those trends. English learners in Amherst, on average, perform at lower rates on MCAS than the overall district population, and while some of that is to be expected, that's one of the rationale that we had for starting the program, because research shows that English learners served in a dual-language program model have better educational outcomes than through any other program model we have available to us, including sheltered English immersion. So that, the research is on the following slide, Doug.
Sorry.
That's okay. So it's important to note there that you see the impacts of the two-way immersion program more and more as you get further through the grades, right? So that's something that I think is noteworthy here. It's a very clear difference in outcomes, but you don't start to see that until students have been in the programs for a number of years, and then it widens.
Could I ask a quick question?
Sure.
The bottom axis, is that years in the program?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
It's not grades?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. My understanding is that it's grades.
It's grades?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, so, because it would be a little different if it was years in the program, because you have students sometimes entering at different points, so.
Okay, thank you.
Particularly English learners. So the Amherst public schools have always had a commitment to diversity and equity, and this commitment helped guide that decision toward implementing the dual-language program in order to work towards improving those opportunity gaps. Additionally, surveys were conducted through the enrollment working group, and those surveys demonstrated a really strong community interest among families for sending their students to a dual-language program. We know that bilingualism is really an asset for all students, and an opportunity that many families are interested in for their children, in addition to our priority of serving the needs of our English learners and our multilingual students. So I'll explain briefly in the next slide, Doug. I know you all have this reference, so I won't go too detailed, but, so in the next slide here, this is an explanation a little bit about dual-language, what it is and how it works. So the three pillars of dual-language are bilingualism and biliteracy, academic achievement, and sociocultural competence. The first pillar highlights the fact that our students are, as a core programmatic goal in the dual-language program, they have to become proficient in two languages. So that sounds obvious, right, but it's important, because it means we have an additional content area, right? We have to teach English language arts and Spanish language arts, and we do have to teach content in both languages. So Spanish proficiency isn't an add-on, but a core aspect of the program. The second pillar, grade-level academic achievement, points to the fact that we have the same academic expectations for our students as for all other students in terms of their content knowledge and learning. The third pillar, the sociocultural competence piece, is really a foundation of everything we do, and it highlights the way in which dual-language programs help students become global citizens who really have an understanding of diversity and equity and justice, and we really work hard to integrate that throughout. The non-negotiables for any dual-language program are that there's a minimum of 50% of the instructional time in the target language or the language other than English, that we separate instruction for each language, right, so we're not constantly mixing, but we have an English teacher and a Spanish teacher, and they are in two different spaces, and that there's a long-term commitment, because we know students won't see the educational outcomes unless we have that long-term commitment. So if you go to the next slide, there's a great video there and another reference that are things that you can check out later about the program. So our program is a two-way immersion program, and what that means is we aim to have an equal number of Spanish-speaking or bilingual students as we have English speakers. The program is a 50-50 model, meaning that we teach 50% of our day in English and 50% of the day in Spanish. It's important to consider that piece of adding one grade level each year, right? So we're currently in grades K to 4, which is fantastic, because we're really starting to see, you know, what it looks like, right, by the time students get to fourth grade. But that also brings us a challenge, that every year we're looking at a new curriculum and, you know, bringing in new staff, reconfiguring what we're doing for that growing program. And I'll talk a little more about staffing later, but it's essential that we need bilingual staffing, and we've done a great job with that. We really have built our capacity in that way, but we still have room to grow, for sure, and we have, you know, need to continue that.
Can I ask a question? I didn't hear at the start whether you'd rather we wait or not.
Oh, I don't have a preference.
Okay. So, can- Okay. So can students, do students have to enter the program as kindergarteners? Or if they move into the district or choose, you know, decide, oh, that does sound great, I'd like to do it, my kid's in second grade, can they... And then, well, would you respond to that?
Sure, yeah. So our enrollment policy is linked there with all the details, but the general answer is students can't enter after kindergarten unless they're Spanish speakers. So we want to welcome all of our Spanish-speaking newcomers or children from bilingual programs or children that have that experience, but typically, the sort of the guidance of the field is that we don't admit students, say, in third grade who would be new to that, to Spanish, right, because they wouldn't be able to keep up with where that cohort of students was in their learning.
Well, same with their English skills.
Yes.
So.
Yes, that's true, but we have English learners coming in all the time, right? So we have to, we're charged with doing that regardless, yeah. There are occasionally programs that will have later entrance points, but most don't. So going on to... Apologies. I think that the updated slides may not be there. Is there an enrollment chart? Go back up. Okay, no. Apologies. I sent Sasha a new version that I thought she was going to share, which I do have with me, but I don't know if it would take a while to pull it up or not. It's up to you. If you feel like it's feasible to do both while I keep going.
If you email it, I can pull it up and display it differently. So yeah, if you've got it, can you email it to me?
Or I have a thumb drive, if it's helpful.
That'll work.
All right, why don't I give you that, and then I'll keep going with this one?
Okay.
There's just a couple of helpful numbers. I made a few small adjustments, but then I also added a slide about the enrollment, as I was able to gather a little more information. Will this one work?
Yeah.
So we can come back to that. So while we're just beginning in our fifth year, right, it feels like it's been a long time and it's a short time, both. I'm excited to share that we have a lot of successes to celebrate. The efforts of the program really align well with the district mission, and that's something that I think we can be really proud of. It aligns with our goals of hiring more diverse, highly-qualified staff. It aligns with our goals of closing the opportunity gap, of providing innovative, multicultural, academically-engaging curriculum, right? So there's really a lot here that connects strongly with the district vision and mission. So the slide here and the following.
Hold on a second. I'm going to switch to the other slide real quick.
Beautiful.
Can I just say, Irv, be sure to speak up if you have a question, because it's just hard for me to see you.
I can hear and see everything.
Perfect.
Nope, that wasn't...
Can I ask a question while we're waiting? Back on the, you had a non-negotiables box, and it said separation of languages. Those students may trans-language. What does that mean?
Great question. So when we say "trans-linguaging," basically, we mean that students can use whatever language resources they have, right? So it's a way of saying, just because the teacher is teaching in Spanish, that doesn't mean we say to them, "You can't ever use English," right? It's the teacher guiding the language of instruction, but we know that students do and should use all the language resources that they have to make meaning, and so we encourage them to do that as well.
Great, thank you. And sorry, also in that box, you had said, it says, "Non-negotiable K through 12 commitment, minimum of K through 5." Maybe I'll talk about this later. Is there a commitment for K through 12? And/or are you looking to expand past fifth grade?
Absolutely. Yeah, so that comes at the end in terms of needs and where we're heading.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, perfect. So this is what I was looking for. This is some enrollment data about the different groups of students that we have. So Groups 1 and 2 are Spanish-speaking students, and so it's really great to see that 40% of the students that we've enrolled over the last five years have been Spanish-speaking students and families, because that's one of the core sort of tenants of a two-way immersion program. Groups 3 and 4 are English-speaking students. Group 3 are English-speaking students zoned for Fort River, and Group 4 are English-speaking students zoned for Crocker and Wildwood. So those groups are all outlined in the enrollment policy, but I thought that was helpful to share, as well as the fact that we have 22% of our current Caminantes students are English learners. So that, you know, there's certainly more students that are multilingual students and not English learners, right? So that's a great benefit for those students as well. All right. So going to successes. So pillar 1, I said, was growing bilingualism and bili literacy. Here are just a couple data snapshots. There's a lot that we could look at, right? And we can always come back to that, but I want to just give a few. So we look at English language development for our English learners, and we see that most, more than half of our English learners are demonstrating average or above-average growth on their access test. For Spanish language development, we have a great opportunity to see via the stamp test that we give to students for Spanish. At the end of third grade, many of our students were already scoring at an intermediate level on the ACT-FOL scale. So the graph on the left shows our student scores, and the levels correspond to the chart on the right, which is the scale for the stamp test. It's also the scale for the ACT-FOL, if that's something folks are familiar with. Go ahead.
I'm not familiar with either of the tests you're referencing. Could you?
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
So the access for ELLs is the state test that's sort of like MCAS, High Stakes English Learner Test, that's given annually. The stamp test is used to provide bili literacy awards, including the Seal of Bili Literacy at the high school level, but we offer it, and as do many other programs, to track progress over time as well. So that's pretty exciting to see, that we have students scoring Level 3, 4, 5 in third grade, when the goal for the high school Seal of Bili Literacy is to be at least at a Level 6. So that's about language development. And then the next slide is about literacy development. One of the assessments we use in the elementary school is called M-Class or M-Class Lectura. This is an assessment that is, luckily, we do have sort of an equivalent assessment in English and Spanish, which is not always the case. And we see that students are roughly 60% of our students in third and fourth grade are at or above grade level in both cases. So that's exciting to see, and I think, you know, the note in red there highlights the fact that when we're looking at the literacy development for a multilingual student, we have to look at a composite of their skills in both languages. Pillar 2, perfect. So in terms of pillar 2, grade-level academic achievement, we try to work with integrated content and language units. So I mentioned that we have an additional content area, Spanish language arts, and we always need to adjust our thinking around pacing and access to content for language learners, whether they're English learners or Spanish learners. And so all those factors combined, right, the fact that teachers have half a day in each language makes it feel like there's always a time crunch, right? We never have enough time to get to everything. So rather than duplicate and say, okay, well, we're going to teach, you know, the same science content in both languages, rather than say, we're going to have science time and writing time and reading comprehension, right? All of that has to be integrated. So we try to use an approach where we have hands-on content learning that connects strongly with the oral language development, with the writing units. And so our teachers have been working hard to create these units that draw on our district units, but that sort of use a bili literacy lens. And it's exciting that some of our teachers have been able to share their work on these units at regional and national conferences and be in conversation with peers about how do we do this work? Okay, go ahead. Next slide. So in regards to pillar 3, sociocultural competence, we've made significant progress as a program and as a school in this area, too. The status of the Spanish language is elevated. We hear more students speaking Spanish and feeling comfortable speaking Spanish, which is amazing. They recognize its value. Students that come in and parents say, "My child doesn't want to speak Spanish to me," a few years in say, "Now my child is comfortable, is interested," right? So this is a huge benefit. Learning for justice standards are integrated across the curriculum. And really importantly, students are connecting across differences, across race, economic, linguistic, class differences, right? All of these differences are converging through this two-way immersion structure that supports children to learn from each other. So that's fantastic. I really liked what Molly said about the cultural exchange piece, right? That's a big part of what we do. Another strength in the program, next slide, is the family engagement. So we've worked hard to connect with families and have opportunities for them to learn about dual-language, for them to be in conversation with each other, to have cultural events. So that's been fantastic, to see the level of engagement. And to see also families' comfort in coming into school when they have someone that they can speak to in their language. We see that, it's important to see that 30% of Amherst students are experiencing a language other than English at home. So our work through Caminantes, but also through expanding bili literacy opportunities, is allowing us to think more multilingually and work towards that over time. All right, go ahead. So a really exciting highlight of our programming over the last five years is that we've been able to establish the Western Mass Bilingual Hub in collaboration with the Holyoke and Springfield Public Schools and the University of Massachusetts. So our colleagues there have been fantastic in terms of helping to provide a bilingual education endorsement program, which is something that's required for our educators working on the Spanish side. So we have 15 educators that have completed this program and three that are currently enrolled. And the Bilingual Hub also has provided a lot of collaboration opportunities between our teachers and leaders, as we all work to continue and grow our programs. So the activities listed below were supported in the grant funding cycles the last four years, but were not supported in this current grant cycle. So this is a big, you know, exclamation point, right? This is, this funding has been essential in helping us build the foundation of the program, but it's not continuing, and this is the time where the district has to start looking at, okay, how do we make this sustainable commitment to make this program work? We luckily haven't had to take on that challenge as much, because we've had this competitive grant funding through the Department of Education that has really helped to, you know, establish a lot of these pieces. So some of this is, the foundation is there and doesn't need to be redone, and some of it is ongoing work that has to continue.
Excuse me, can I ask, did the program or the district, I guess, apply and turn down?
Yes.
Or, I see.
Yeah. And so I could elaborate my thoughts on the rationale, but, you know, it's just to see where we are now.
Yeah, but could we apply again in the future?
We could, and we certainly will. You know, any opportunity we can, we will. I'm not sure whether that will become available again and, you know, what the future funding cycles will look like, so we certainly hope so. Great. So in addition to that major challenge of continuing to fund sustainably, something that we need to mention is the busing. So because Caminantes is a district program, students coming from all school zones, we have, our transportation team has done a great job working to make that happen, right? But we still have a major issue, which is that there's a transfer bus, and so students that are coming from Crocker Farm and Wildwood are missing significant instructional minutes because of the need to transfer to or from that school, their home school. Furthermore, it's really important to note that our Spanish-speaking families, students and families are disproportionately impacted by that, because they're the students who are more likely to be coming from the Crocker and Wildwood zones, right, because Spanish speakers are given priority across the district. So there are fewer English speakers coming from the other zones than there are Spanish speakers. Does that make sense? Okay, I was watching the wheels turning. So that's something that we really need to look at going forward. We need to continue recruiting and retaining our Spanish-speaking staff, and we also need to look at, as Molly said, we need to look at what are the supports we have to make the support equitable for the English side and the Spanish side. We have English learner teachers for our English learner students, but many of our students are Spanish learners, and we don't have that additional support at this time. If we want to have really effective, multi-tiered systems of support that can work with the needs of all students at different levels of their growth, we need the staffing to do that. Curriculum materials are another challenge, and again, one that we've made great progress in, but just I think it's worth noting that it is an ongoing challenge. We're limited first in what's available in Spanish and English, right, as opposed to materials that are available only in English. So for example, when the math program was adopted, it was very clear that it had to be available in both languages. But even when materials are available in Spanish, they're not always created with the lens of a dual-language learner or a bilingual learner, and they're not always, you know, they still require a lot of our teachers who go above and beyond to really modify and adjust and differentiate and sometimes create more materials. So teachers are doing that work all the time to modify and differentiate, but our Spanish teachers are going above and beyond that because of the limited resources that are available.
Katie, we had a presentation about the math program. Is it your experience that the math program itself falls into that category of needing extra work on behalf of the teachers?
There are times that it does, and it's not, you know, no fault. Like, our team has been very thoughtful about that, but it's just still not getting us to a balance of quite where we would want it to be. We're lucky, though, that the publishers have been working with us on that.
Okay.
So those are a few other challenges. So I guess, to summarize, here are some needs. You know, certainly continued commitment and investment in the program. So we made this commitment five years ago, and we need to really continue it, right? We see amazing outcomes with students. We see the connection with families. This comes up in our family meetings when they're saying, hey, what's going to happen when our kids get to middle school? And they know that that's the plan, but we don't have the plan yet, right? So we need the sustainable funding and commitment for what we have going on now, but we really need to look at our plans for expanding into the secondary schools. And we also need to look at our plans for how Caminantes will operate within the new school when the Fort River and Wildwood community are combined, because it's already a challenge and one that we've worked hard to work with in terms of having a strand school, right? So the, we need to have cohesion as a school community at Fort River, but each, you know, Caminantes will always have some different needs in terms of professional development, in terms of materials, in terms of how we work with students. So that challenge will continue as we look towards a new school. So I think those are essential needs as we go forward. So hopefully, that was informative, and then I'd love to just answer whatever questions you all have and what that brings up for you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It was very informative. We do have a few minutes for questions. Bridgette?
Yeah, so I'm just going to throw a few things out there and then maybe respond to whatever is important to you, and some of those might be things that might be decisions at Doug or the principal level. But I think one of the first things that I was thinking about is, at the new school, for those support positions, can being dual-language proficient be a requirement for staff? Like, one of the job hiring requirements for the support staff, I would think. The staff we have now, obviously, we want them to keep their roles, but as we bring in new people, I would think that would be a really great thing. The second thing is, we've got a special ed van model that takes people from different schools across the district. So I'm just wondering if that model could work as well for your students so that they don't lose that learning time. I wanted to comment and get your feedback on that 40% of students, whether you're looking at the M-Class or the access testing or whatever, like, what types of things are you doing to support that other group who aren't quite making it? And then just, given the types of outcomes you're seeing and the progress you're doing, and even maybe on some standard tests that all students are seeing, we might want to be making sure we're longitudinally tracking in a way that will show data that can show the outcomes across time, even compared to a comparison group of other Amherst students, because I think that would help us, you know, make the case to support this going forward. And just on a personal level, I want to say, I was there when my son was two at some of the first meetings for this program and have been a big supporter and promoter of this, and I'm really happy to see it full swing like this and to hear especially about that type of feeling of welcome and belonging for the students there. So thanks to all the teachers here for the work you're doing and Katie for running the program. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I was gonna say, do you want me to respond or do you want me to collect questions and feedback and then?
Uh, maybe actually we should get the questions out first. Deb?
I'd like to know how much the grant was from Desi and was it an annual grant? If it was, was it, you know, was it tiered, staggered, that's not quite the right word, but it was the same amount every year? I, a little bit on the numbers would be helpful.
Okay.
Herb or Jennifer? Can't see theirs.
So this year's fourth graders are the, are the oldest in the program. And so when, when those students are in sixth grade, that's when they're gonna, we think, gonna be moved to the middle school? Do we think? Is that, is that timing right? So, and, and maybe you haven't thought through this yet, but like what? There, and there are a lot of variables, but anything, any thoughts you can share about how you're thinking about that? And then I'd love to hear from Doug about the bus situation and if there are any ideas or changes or plans the district might have.
I'm curious about several things. One, do, um, do the children in the Comenantes program go outside that program in Fort River for any other special? Are they, are they in class at any time with Fort River students who are not in Comenantes? Or are they basically isolated school within the school? I also wonder, because the English language, excuse me, the Spanish content is, is new. The Spanish literacy is a new content area. Are there state standards for that? Are there, or are you just basically meeting the curriculum standards in English, doing them in Spanish? And also is there any kind of accreditation or review by the state of this program? And finally, after, I, I would, it sounds like it's been a huge amount of work to develop or modify curriculum. I guess I would hope that after, in its fifth year, maybe the kindergarten, first and second grade curricula are pretty well done, like you've, cause you've been through them now for several years. So I would, I would hope that the expense is at the margins, you know, in the, in the newest couple grades. But I don't know if that's how it works out in practice.
Okay, there's a lot there. Some of these are things that I thought, okay, I can't put in too much detail, but what do you wanna know? So, um, where to start? All right, so...
We don't expect you to have, if you don't have all the answers right now.
I have thoughts on a lot of those.
Okay, all right.
But you also probably don't want me to talk all night, so let me see what I can cover. So integration in terms of coming at this and what we call the explorers classes at Fort River. Similarly to students who are in any two different classes, the only time that they are generally together is when they're at lunch and recess. So they have that time, but that's true of, uh, classes that are in a dual language or not in a dual language program. State standards for Spanish, so this is an interesting one. We do have Common Core and Espanol that we can reference. Um, and there are, many of the standards are the same, but they highlight for us what the differences are in Spanish. Um, so for example, accents is something that we don't have to teach in English, but we need to teach in Spanish. We also work with, there, there's eventually sort of a merging of world language frameworks and dual language frameworks. So we can use actful, uh, standards, which are world language standards because as we get towards the high school level, we wanna see a merging of that framework with the dual language framework. Speaking of the middle school, so really preliminary thoughts on our first class moving to the middle school would be that if the middle school opens in the fall of twenty-six, that year would be when our first class is in seventh grade, right?
But your first class will be in fifth grade this coming fall, yes?
Right.
Twenty-four and that?
Twenty-five, right?
Yep.
Check my, I do this all the time. I have this right? I think I have this right. So, so the challenge I see there is that when our first class gets to sixth grade, they would potentially still be at the elementary school, but we really need them to, to be working within a middle school model because we don't wanna create a model that's an elementary model to then the next year move to a middle school model. If that makes sense. So there's that tension. We, we really have to think about sixth grade as a middle school model. And what does that mean?
I'm sorry, is this a unique to Comenantes issue or this is just in general?
This is generally true, but I think the difference is that we'll have only one year where sixth grade will be in the elementary school. So I know our sixth grade teachers often are thinking about that transitional period and sort of preparing students for middle school. But we don't wanna create the first year of sixth grade in a way that won't then help us move forward to the next year, if that makes sense. So for middle school, typically what's done is you teach Spanish language arts and at least one other content area in Spanish. Ideally more than that, but that's the minimum, right? So you would have two core classes in Spanish for students that came from dual language and are moving into the middle school, continuing in a bilingual model. Let's see, so...
Okay, can you just remind me, so any one class, like the grade level in Comenantes, has maybe forty, forty children?
Up to forty, yep.
Okay.
In terms of state review, um, there's generally a six-year cycle for ELL programs to be reviewed. This will be our first cycle. We actually have our, uh, the beginning of that cycle this spring and then more of it next year, um, to review our ELL program. I haven't been through that yet with us having a dual language program, but I anticipate that the, a review of this dual language program as an English learner program will be, uh, part of that ELL review. But I'm not sure yet what that will look like exactly. Coming to, so I'll go to some details about the grants. So we've received the grant over five years. The most recent, each year, they have had some goals that are the same and some that change. So one of the goals has always been supporting new and continuing dual language programs. One of the goals has always been supporting a bilingual hub to, uh, provide teacher training. Goals three and four have changed over time. So there was a multilingual libraries portion of the grant one year. There was funding for an ELL institute, which we did at the high school. There was funding last year for curriculum, which was the one we were most hoping for this year, um, that didn't come through. The amounts have varied, but the last two years, um, were in the five hundred thousand range. So these were really significant. Um, there's a big chunk of that that goes to UMass for the teacher training. There's also significant portions of that that went towards bilingual C programming district wide that wasn't just for coming on this. Last year, the curriculum portion supported coming on this, uh, curriculum development as well as structured literacy curriculum development for English learners. So that's looking at teaching foundational skills for English learners in their reading, but making it really appropriate to multilingual learners, um, which is a whole separate presentation. But, so, so there was a lot of aspects of this. Um, we also did receive smaller grant funding to support proficiency in languages other than English, which helped with some aspects of the dual language program, but also the CILB literacy programming. So that's the grant funding. And the portion of that that we did receive this year was the teacher training. Desi asked us to apply as a bilingual hub, so Holyoke Public Schools submitted that application on behalf of Amherst, Holyoke and Springfield. So that is the one part that we did get, which is great to have that opportunity to continue. That's been really valuable.
And how much was that?
Or does it not come to us?
It doesn't come directly to us, but it will pay for a certain amount of seats for our teachers to attend the program. Let me loop back. Okay, so absolutely, I would love to see a long-term, um, data tracking system that, where we can gather data longitudinally and we have some parts of that and we need to keep building that. Support for students that are not in that sixty percent. So a couple of things. One is that we have to think with that bilingual lens. And so we may have students that are in, showing above average growth in one language, but below average growth in another language and we're really looking at that composite. So it's tricky to think about, but they may actually be showing typical growth when you look across both languages, right? So there's gonna be some students in that bucket. There's gonna be some students that are struggling significantly in one or both languages, of course. Some of those students may be receiving intervention. So they may be receiving math intervention, reading intervention. They may be special education students who are integrated within the program. So there's a, a lot of different support strategies that are in place depending on the specific needs. So of course those little snapshot data can't tell that story, right? But there's, there's certainly a robust system, uh, of educators looking at data all the time to try to figure out what the story is for each kid and what we can do to best intervene. Hiring requirements, we're absolutely always trying to hire bilingual staff. Whether that, you know, it, it doesn't become a requirement because we're looking at the whole picture of what an educator is bringing. But it's certainly something that we're looking for across the district in all positions to increase our multilingual staff. So that's, that's certainly something that will be considered. I think I've gotten to most of the questions. Do you have thoughts on the van question?
I have the, yeah, the busing question. So, so I think the, the really short answer is, is that it would require potentially a couple of vehicles and a couple of drivers to do that. Because the thing that happens is that we provide, in our system of transportation, we have some of it contracted with external companies and we have part of it, uh, that we do ourselves. And the folks that we have that drive for us, when they're not driving, they're doing maintenance work for us. And so the, the tricky thing is, is that we have barely enough time. I think I'll be fair to say that's barely enough time to, so it's independent of, of trying to get kids from Crocker and Wildwood to, to Comenantes. Just with the regular sort of stuff we're doing, we barely have the right transition times between, uh, high school and, and elementary as far as running the routes, dropping off the kids, run the routes, drop off the kids, pause, middle of the day, do it again at the end. So what happens, and this is, you know, what we've done, given the resources we have and, uh, it's sort of split the difference. And so the idea with the, with the transfer busing is that, okay, they'll, you know, we have a route for them to get them to their homeschool and it's just one single bus to take all those kids. But it's, it's a run that happens after another run squeezed in before the secondary run or vice versa, right? So to really truly sort of satisfy the need would require, you know, additional staff and additional vehicles to, to really, to really do it. And that's, you know, and again, that's, it, it gets back to sort of a funding question and, and, um, is that, you know, in, in, when we're sort of balancing out and trying to seek resources, whether it be from the town for capital purchasing for vehicles or, or staffing, is, is that where we feel the most value for the dollar spent? Or are there other things that we have in our needs list that, that will get funded first and seem to have a greater impact? You know, and that's, it's a legitimate sort of series of conversations about what's, what's what, which is, which is the first thing to sort of invest in as, as resource available.
Just Doug, is it legal to have twenty to thirty minutes a day for a particular group of students who, it sounds like might fit a demographic that is at least, um, linguistically based, if not, uh, ethnic group? So I just wonder, like, I don't know if it's something, do we really have a choice? Because time on learning is an issue, right?
Right. So time on learning is specifically prescribed by the state and the amount of it that happens. So if, if, you know, and, and things like riding the bus or transitioning between one room and another, going to lunch, those don't count towards time on learning. And so, yeah, it's a, it's a real question mark because it doesn't matter whether you're a, an EL student or not, or a Comenante student or not. There's a prescribed amount of, of time on learning for all students. And so that's nine hundred hours per year for, uh, for elementary students and nine hundred and ninety, I believe, for secondary students. And so it's, it's a critical question, right, as to whether or not we're, we're meeting that requirement? Are we, are we finding other ways to gain back that time for students or not? And it's, and it's a question, absolutely. And it's one that the state, you know, could very well, you know, come to us and say, no, you gotta find a different solution here and/or, you know, extend everybody else's day by twenty minutes or, you know, pick your, pick your spot. So there, there's a, there are a number of transportation challenges we've had in recent years when we shifted the secondary to a later start. We're still battling that a little bit as far as the, 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 the time between, uh, sort of runs is, is really tight, too tight. Um, and so it, it's a complication for us that way as well. So those are, you know, ongoing struggles we have and ways in which we're trying to resolve them and continue to work to, to try to resolve those. So that's again, you know, one more in the, on the list of things that we're trying to, trying to reconcile and make sure we're compliant around what our, our needs are for the kids.
So will that be the case when we have the new elementary school building online? Will those time delays go away or will it remain?
Depends who's in the Crocker district.
Right. I, I, I think it'll be less because, you know, it's, you're not trying to get from two different places to, to, to Fort, but you still will have that challenge at even, you know, if you're trying to bring, you know, a dozen kids or twenty kids from, from Crocker to, to, uh, to the new school, you know, you're gonna have that same kind of, either we'll need an additional sort of run or bus and/or we'll need, uh, you know, a staggered system like we have now. And, you know, the other, what we don't know yet is whether or not there's clear efficiencies in bus routes for a consolidated school. Right? So if you think about the fact that we have two different buildings that we're running kids to and now we just have, I mean, with three different buildings and we'll go to two, there may be an economy of, of, of bus routes that gives us the latitude to, to, to solve that problem. I can't guarantee that, but I'm saying there, there's potentially that. So that's part of the conundrum as we, as we work through this and, and think about where the line's drawn and how many kids are we dealing with and, and what's our, um, you know, sort of current capacity, what our new, you know, capacity need is relative to the fewer buildings.
Can I say, excuse me, I think we need to move on.
One follow-up question?
Okay.
But you'll have fewer students having to go to the hub. Transportation hub. The, the, they take one route and then they transfer to a different bus. And regardless of the configurations, there'll be fewer students with that, taking two buses to get to school?
That's right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Can we keep going or do we need a break? Do we need a stretch break?
I could always use a break.
All right. Could we take a five-minute break?
Yes.
Thank you. So we will be back at eight o'clock.
Oh, boy. I didn't print it out. All right. So, our next item is the initial FY25 budget presentation. I don't know whether Doug or Shannon is going to kick this off.
Hello, Shannon. I may give a little, very small intro. And so, Shannon will be joining us taking through the operating budget. And we have a very small slide deck we put together in the day today. So, she'll take that. Let me go back a slide so that we're in the right place. But Shannon will take you through that, answer questions. I have a small little bit of mostly information relative to, excuse me, capital projects we're gonna request from the town. So, I can, I'll do that at the end. It's mostly for informational purposes for the JCPC members, but it's also just so you guys have a sense of where our capital needs are and how we're projecting those moving forward. But I think at this point, I'll turn to Shannon. Shannon, just make sure to tell me when you need the slide moved or scrolled. I think we're gonna have to scroll a little bit as we go through this. So, just let me know.
And welcome, Shannon. Thank you for attending.
Yes. Happy to be here. Okay, so, this is our FY25 initial projected budget. We're gonna start by just going over a brief timeline. So, we're, we kinda know what's going on. Tonight is our initial budget presentation that I'll do shortly. February thirteenth will be the public hearing and the presentation of budgets adjustments, additions and reductions. And March nineteenth would be when we hope that the school committee would vote on it. That's really important because we have to vote on it by sometime beginning to middle of March to meet the town deadlines. At the end of March is when we'd have to have that done by for them. So, we can just dive right into where we stand. So, we're looking at a twenty-seven million, two-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-dollar budget for FY25. This is a four-point-nine percent increase from FY24. We are, so right now, our revenue projections from various sources, we are receiving twenty-six million, seven-hundred-and-one-thousand-eighty-eight dollars from the town of Amherst. And that is a three percent increase to the amount that we received from Amherst in FY24. We are utilizing seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand in school choice to support this budget, which is already in the budget and two-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand worth of circuit breaker. The circuit breaker did go down from last year in FY24. It's a little, it's like about a hundred and some change less than what we received the previous year. UMass is also providing eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand, which is into some of the payroll lines already and are utilizing four-hundred-thousand of SIR funds that have to be spent by September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. So, we'll be using that from July to September and that'll be the remainder of our SIR funds. So, we're about five-point-eight percent increase in salaries and this includes steps and calls and the new salaries that were negotiated after the contracts in FY24. We're seeing inflation across the board for all categories. Some of the larger changes that we see is special education contracted work for positions that have gone unfilled. So, we have FTEs that we're hoping to fill in salaries but we have not been able to have, to find people is the real problem. There's not a lot of people. So, a lot of, some of the specialized work that they do, OT, PT, AL, things of that sort, have had to be done through contracted services. And I think it's also important to know in FY24, there was a fourteen percent increase in specialized services that was from, that's provided to us by the OSD who sets those rates. And in FY25, we're gonna see another four percent increase. So, it was a steep increase last year and we have an additional increase this year. We do have some reserve relief funds that are coming out. I did attend a webinar for that. I don't know that we'll know the number for FY24 to help alleviate some of that spending until March. I was really unclear from the webinar when we would know the amount for FY25. That wasn't too clear to me, but I'm hoping in March, I'll have some, we'll have some clearer information and how it might help the FY25 budget reduce what our deficit is, which is currently at five-hundred-and-three-thousand. If you take the number from the town minus where our budget is, that's where you get the five-oh-three. So, also the insurance, as I mentioned before, is increased overall and that's not just health insurance. That's our school liability insurance. The whole sector has increased with inflation. Our transportation costs are also increasing with inflation. So, it is certainly a difficult budget. So, I'm hoping though with some of the, as a positive note, some of the refund from the special education that we're getting will help alleviate some of the FY24 budget but also FY25. And by the end of January, beginning of February, we should have more secure health insurance numbers and maybe that'll help close our gaps some depending if they come in less than what we've projected. We did keep the revenue projections pretty modest and conservative in the governor's budget. We don't know exactly how that'll play out yet. So, that's really where we stand. I assume you will have a lot of questions, but that's a general overview that I wanted to start with. And Doug, you look like you have something to say.
I do. I do have a couple of things I'll offer. So, just speaking of that, so just to explain a couple of things for those that may not be as familiar, you know, school choice revenue is money that we get for school choice students that come into our district. If we have students that leave, we have to make those payments. The town does that. Our school choice revenues are primarily, there's, well, I shouldn't say primarily. There are two parts to that. There's a base five-thousand dollars per student. If a student has additional needs for special education services or that, we can file what are called claims and be reimbursed for those. The sending district is the one that pays those. What we do with school choice generally is we receive the money in the year it happens and so, it's a little difficult to know exactly what you're gonna get because you have to file the claims and submit them and then you find out in like June and that's a difficult place to be. They get you the money within, essentially, within the fiscal year, but it's a little difficult. So, what we typically do is we pool that money into our revolving account and then, you know, budget that money to be spent the following year. And so, we try to use that revolving account of special, school choice money to sort of moderate our expense over time. And so, you know, if we have, and we've done this over the last couple of years, actually, if you were looking through our history in recent years, because we've had SIR funds, we've used a little less school choice. That allowed us to build the balance up and that's gonna be why we can leverage a little more in these coming couple of years as that SIR funding disappears. And so, it's sort of smoothes the trajectory away from those SIR funds. Circuit breaker, on the other hand, is money that we receive that is for extraordinary special education expense. So, there's a foundation amount. They go four times foundation, roughly up to about forty-seven or eight-thousand dollars is on the district to pay for it all. Above that amount starts to become eligible for circuit breaker reimbursement. And again, it's one of those things where from a budgeting standpoint, it's difficult. So, we are allowed to submit the claims and get reimbursed in one year. We do the work in one year. They pay us the following year and then we have to, once we get the money, we have a year to spend it. So, we essentially, once we collect it during one year, we use it and budget the exact amount. Two-hundred-and-eighty-seven is not the exact number for this year. And that's dependent upon, and so with circuit breaker, part of the difficulty there is what is an eligible cost and there's what's above the sort of thresholds and then it's at what level did the state fund reimbursement for that. So, they don't always fund that at a hundred percent. They can't always. Transportation in the region does the same sort of thing. So, we do try to, again, sort of bank the money, use it the next year so we can be precise with the budgeting on that. And then, the other thing I'll say is that the bill passed and signed by the governor for additional support for special education this year due to the large increase in those special education costs. It's a particular category, special education cost that the state sets the rates for. So, it's not all of our special education costs. It's predominantly things like out-of-district placements or specialized programs that are outside the district that are in that category of providers and that have their rate set by the state. So, those are the ones that are eligible. That funding is strictly for fiscal twenty-four. I don't believe it is, you know, because the legislature can only appropriate money in the year in which it is operating, right? So, it appropriates, you know, they create a fiscal twenty-four budget and then they can do other appropriations during that year, but they only do one year at a time. They can't commit future funds. So, that funding from that additional supplementary budget will help this year. However, what and how that influences fiscal twenty-five and the future is the following. So, once we have a sense of what that might look like for us as far as support, if anything, that then alleviates stress on our current budget where we're using SIR funds, for example, to support our budget. That preserves those SIR funds for use next year. And so, if, you know, depending on how that sort of calculus plays out relative to that additional funding from the state and that support, that translates into, you know, we'll receive it and, you know, near the end of the fiscal year, but we will receive that and then not spend other money that we can carry over. But if we know what that is during our process of the next couple of months or have an estimate of what that's gonna look like, then you'll see things, and this will show up in our sort of adds and cuts and adjustments list, you know, we've got four-hundred-thousand of SIR money sort of in the grid right now. If we find there's another hundred thousand, that'll show up as an adjustment of support and reduce, you know, from five-hundred-thousand dollars of shortfall at the moment to four-hundred-thousand dollars if we are so lucky to have that level of support. So, it's sort of this cascading effect. It doesn't technically carry over from year to year, but it can have that effect because of the ability to shift current spending onto that additional support and then take SIR money that we were gonna use to cover those costs and move it to another fiscal year. So, I hope that hopscotch of things made sense to everyone. If not, I'm happy to answer more questions about it.
I would also say, just because I pulled up the PowerPoint from the webinar, it looks like we will know one number in March for FY24 and it looks like some of the, at the end of FY24, when we have our total claims amount, that there will be reimbursement that they give us in FY25. Maybe that's where I was misunderstanding, but that's what I just read really quick.
Thank you. So, any questions about just what we've seen so far, staying kinda on the top level, Jennifer?
Okay, this is the part that always confuses me. So, you've got major funding sources listed and I feel like, I feel like I wanna add those up. So, those are like, those are our funding, that's our revenue. But if I add them up, they add up to like twenty-eight million, which makes it, and then our, but our bottom line is twenty-seven million. So, but some of these are already applied?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, which ones are already applied and where?
So, school choice is in some of the payroll lines already. The circuit breaker is in different special ed expense lines, not payroll lines. The UMass funds are in some payroll lines and the SIR we have in our contingency fund line.
Right. And so, those, so since this is a listing of expenses, those all reduce the expenses. So, you gotta kind of, it's a bit of pretzel logic here. You gotta kind of reverse it here. So, if, for example, we did not put the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in school choice, that first line at the top would be seven-hundred-and-fifty, six-million-nine-hundred-and-thirteen-five-sixty-eight would be seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars more in expense. Because this is, what's showing here is the expense paid by the appropriated money from the town. And so, that fiscal twenty-five comment that's proposed when we get to the bottom should match the town target of twenty-six-seven-eleven-zero-eighty-eight. Because that's unappropriated.
But what we don't see necessarily is the full revenue picture or I guess we see the full expense, but we don't see the full, well, because you've already applied some of the revenue to the expense.
Right. In this demonstration of appropriated expense, in the budget book, there is a consolidated spending plan. So, it should display in broad terms, sort of totals by sort of category that are paid by appropriation, that that's covered by grants, that that's covered by revolving funds. And so, if you want the sort of grand total of things that we're able to reasonably project, there are other grants that we get that support our, you know, or gifts that we get that support our budgets that aren't shown there just because they're not regular. regular enough to, to predict. But as far as the things that are, are routine and known and, and quantifiable are in that consolidated spending plan. So if you look at that page, which I think is preceding this.
Seventeen.
Yeah. It, it has a little bit of a layout with the totality of cost there.
Jennifer, I didn't mean to jump on your question. Go ahead.
So, sorry Doug, which, so the, the town target of 26,711,088, which number on the grid is supposed to get down to that? Is it the?
The bo, so near the bottom, where it says budget total, and it has a, a single line above and a double line below, but it's below additions and reductions and, and all of that.
Yeah.
Which currently on this one is showing twenty-seven, two, two-one-five, oh-six-oh.
Yeah.
That's, that's our, our total appropriated expense.
Which is higher than what the?
Which is higher by about 503,000 than the 26, seven, eleven, oh-eighty-eight that the town has, has said that they have available in funds for us.
Okay, sorry. And so the, the, so, so that's essentially what's going to need to be cut to?
Right.
Okay. And sorry, the, so I'm sorry, I have a couple of questions in my head. The 400,000 under additions and reductions, is that the ESAR?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And then, okay, so my, so now my overall question is, so when we as a school committee approve the budget, shouldn't we be approving what our district is going to, the, what our district is going to spend, what we're, what we're planning to spend in total, not just what we're appropriating from the town?
Technically, no. So interestingly, so, and I don't mean to be flippant, I'm not, I'm not meaning to be that way. I'm hopefully trying to be a bit amusing, but not.
It's okay, you're fine.
But, 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 you know, your responsibility is the appropriated budget. The grants are fully under the control of the district. The revolving funds are in, the use of revolving funds to support the budget are part of voting this appropriated budget. So you are tacitly approving those, but the grants are technically under the control and, and, and execution of, of the district. I mean, we're not trying to hide anything, and they're in the budget book, and we make our best guess of where we think we're going to apply those funds, but things do change over the course of the year. But the appropriated budget's a piece that you care about because again, that's what you're going to recommend and approve to send to the town council, who then also votes a bottom line.
Okay. Thank you.
Deb, go ahead. Oh, I, I told her, Irv, can you let Deb go first and then you?
No, he's fine.
All right.
So I just actually, I had two questions, but one's just a clarifying question, which I, just to be a hundred percent clear. So all of the, of the major funding sources, the, the last four have already been factored into what we're seeing.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Irv, go ahead.
So Doug, and I think other people had the same question, and I'm trying to process this. When I see that the town has appropriation is 26,711,88, and then I look at other sources, those sources add, you know, add up to more than 27,000, 27 million. So the question is, when I, then you somehow put those in the budget, and they are represented in there and, and various line items, but it doesn't seem, it, it's hard for me to see where, if I see all the total sources of revenue that we have, that, that's available, I, I don't see how that affects our bottom line. I know, I get lost in terms of, all right, add them all up. It doesn't add up to that bottom line. It adds up to more than the bottom line.
That's right.
So why?
So, so the, the, the first piece of that is, is that the, so the 27, two fifteen, oh-six-oh there at the bottom of, of that column, in comparison to 26, seven, eleven, oh-eighty-eight, because that's appropriated dollars versus appropriated dollars, that shortfall is about 503,000. So, so if you were to take, if you were to want to do it in a, in a sense of totality, if you were to take the 26, seven, eleven, oh-eighty-eight plus those other sources of funds, then on the, on the, the charts left there, that 27, two fifteen, you'd also have to add in the seven fifty, two eighty-seven, one eighty-five, and 400,000 back to that because they've already been subtracted out. So, so the, you know, the, the school choice, circuit breaker, UMass, and ESAR are, are already accounted for in, in the columns. And what this is telling us is that when we look at, you know, totality of expenses reduced by those sources of funds for those four categories, we're still at a, a total level of, of, of expense that's about 500,000 more than what the town has available to us. So I hope that maybe helps a little.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but, you know, just if I'm, if I'm looking at a budget and I say, well, the town is going to be appropriating 26,711, et cetera, and then there's cool, school choice, which is a source of funds, and then the circuit breaker, then UMass partnership, and then ESAR, and I add all those up together as funding that should be applied to the budget to meet our budget requirements, then it, then I look at what we have here, and it does, just doesn't seem to, in, in, in other words, what you're saying doesn't make sense to me when I add up, if I'm doing this in a regular kind of way, and when I'm, you know, here's, here's, here's all the sources of funds, and here's all the, all the expenses, and then you detract the expenses from the funds that you have available.
I think the consolidated spending plan shows that, or on the previous page.
The thing I would say is this, is that if you want to take the, the sources of funds that are listed there, the town and the other, if we want to find the comparable, you have to take the 27, two fifteen, oh-six-oh at the bottom of this, and then add the, the 750,000 for school choice, the 287,000 for circuit breaker, the 185,000 for UMass, and the 400,000 for ESAR, and add to that to get totals, and we're still on a shortfall. So the two, 27, two fifteen, oh-six-oh is only the appropriated dollars. So it's trying to match, if we were in balance, that number would be the same as the town target number. So it's only appropriated funds we're showing here. Let me see if I can pull up the, the, the consolidated spending plan and see if that helps provide a little bit. Just see if I can, huh, that's the right one. Make that just a little bigger. Okay. Let me, is that showing?
No.
No, good. All right, I thought it wasn't, but sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. So on this presentation, so what we see here in the left column, if I can get my, find my mouse to point at it, all right. So this left column is just appropriation. So this 27, two fifteen, oh-six-oh matches what was on that other chart?
Yes.
But these other two columns give the other sources of funds that we were talking about, so grants and, and revolving funds and those sort of things. And so that's where we get to a totality of 30,523,45. So if you were going to compare the, the things listed as sources on one, and then this total expense, and again, you'll still be 503,000 and change over budget, but, but that would be a more comparable, I think, that you're looking for.
I'd be curious as to the, the FY24 number for total spending. How different that 30, how does the 30, five-two-zero compare to this year's total spending?
Well.
Because.
There's a good question.
Yes.
Maybe dig out last year's and tell you, but.
Maybe Jennifer or someone else was getting at is, even if we don't have control over anything or responsibility for a piece of the budget other than the appropriation, we of course are interested in the, in the complete education package that, that our district is offering. And so I think we're all curious about how that maybe trends over time or, you know.
Yeah, I don't know. Shannon, have you looked at, at the totality for last year versus this year? I, I haven't in a while, so I don't know. And it, the tricky thing is, you know, you know, we, we, you know, how much, you know, you can significantly switch, you know, or, or shift how much we are spending in like ESAR funds or, because like for this year in the support of the budget, it's about 550 or 560,000 of ESAR funds that support. Our school choice is probably more like, I want to say it's 600,000, but I'm drawing a blank right now. Is it six or for the current year? For this year, it's 600,000. So, you know, we kind of, those kind of flip-flop from each other compared to this year, but not exactly. And then of course, you know, the circuit breaker varies considerably. So, you know, we had a circumstance with circuit breaker a couple of years ago where we had more students that qualified, and so our, our, you know, sort of reimbursement from the state was pretty significant. And so it had a pretty, you know, but when you lose, because there's a lag, you know, we have a sort of, you know, you have lean years and you have windfall years, you know, sort of a windfall year. In other words, that support, which we have to spend, you know, provides tremendous amount of support to, to our special education spending this year where we don't have quite as much expense relative to, to that. Next year will even back out again and, and be more like, like what we saw this year. So you have those sort of peaks and valleys that are also sort of interfering with that broad view of, of, of what's a cost, you know?
Because the expense and revenues are not, don't occur in the same year, you're saying. I mean, the revenue.
Not for circuit breaker. No. Circuit breaker has a weird, a, a lagging reply. And, and we tend to have sort of the same number of students, so it tends to be fairly even and kind of tracking along with inflation and whatnot. And then, you know, you add a student that suddenly cranks up your, your reimbursement the following year, and so you have those sort of peaks that happen a little bit by virtue of how many kids you have. But, you know, we had some particularly high need students for a couple of years, and then, you know, they move on and come into the secondary level, and then that funding sort of laggingly sort of returns back to a sort of more typical level. I'd say this year's funding in that 287 is pretty, pretty standard. That's kind of the neighborhood of where we are for, for that circuit breaker support from year to year. Most of the time, that's kind of where we were. We were kind of elevated for a year or two because of a couple of kids and the, and the programming that they needed. So I think that that supports a little more level. So it, it's, the struggle is we've got multiple variables that are all changing simultaneously, right? And so it's, it's, it's harder to kind of compare in some ways from, from one year to the next because we have those, you know, resources we can leverage, and we're trying to balance those, those different sort of peaks and valleys to smooth when, when we can.
Okay, so we, we're on page one, I think, of Shannon's presentation. Is there more, or are we just going to stop here?
No, I only did the one slide. I, I figured it was a good general overview, and then we, I would field questions.
All right. Okay, good. I just didn't know if there was eight more, eight more pages. Deb, go ahead. You had your.
I think they're quick questions. Last year, if we were looking at the same summary sheet from last year, would one of those lines in the major funding sources be the DESI grant that we did not get this year?
So here's the interesting thing about that grant, and a difficult thing about that particular grant. So that's a grant that got awarded during the fiscal year. And, and, and I, I have to say, this is a, a difficulty with that type of grant. So it would be awarded during the fiscal year with the need to be committed or spent during the fiscal year. So no, those don't show up.
Okay.
And, and, and so if we were to look at the end of year report where we report all our spending, so when we finish the year and we close the books and all that sort of stuff, we have to report all our spending in all the different categories, nine ways from Sunday, that would show that totality of spending in, in those other areas like that. But in, in our budgeting, we can't because that, that grant is one, and we have a few others here and there where it is a grant that we apply for and, and get awarded, and then are committed to spending during that same fiscal year, which is a bit of a, a hard thing to do. And if Katie were still here, she would say, it's a challenge because, you know, they give you notice at like the end of February, and you've got four months to sort of figure out how to spend it wisely. And, and there are things you can do. There's some, you know, we used it to support some summer work and, and some of that sort of stuff, so it kind of bled across fiscal years, but it's really difficult to sort of show that properly because it's, it's an in-year grant kind of thing.
Yeah. Okay, so I guess the real question would be then, where would I see the lack of that grant in these numbers?
The net, the net expense to the district.
Okay. So it's already in there?
Yeah.
No, I'm asking.
You know, it, it was before, and generally, you know, most grants have a, what they call a non-supplanting aspect to them, which means you can't replace funding you have to, you know, funding you're normally going to do, you can't replace with grant funding. So that's also why it, it, the fact that it was in with, within the fiscal year. So, you know, for example, if, if we wanted to pay, let's say, we could pay a teacher to cover, you know, the fifth grade for the coming year. If we budgeted that, we can't, or, you know, we can't supplant that with grant funds. Most of them have that kind of rule, most grants do. Occasionally, they let you do it, but most times not. It's for things above and beyond.
And then I did have another question. So the bill that you said was signed by the governor for extra funding, is that a one-time-only thing, or will we be able to add that into the budget going forward?
It's a one-time-only to my, I mean, you know, it could be, you know, they may consider that as part of this current fiscal 25 state budget.
Yeah.
To sort of support education spending differently. So how they support circuit breaker, whether they create a new flavor of that that allows for that, that's the, you know, we'll find, the governor's budget comes out a week from yesterday.
Okay.
So there might be things that we spot in there that people will, will notice if there's extra funding. I don't, I don't know, the state of the state address was, let's say, last night or night before last. I think the governor had a few different educational initiatives, some around early childhood. So, you know, we'll see how that goes. I mean, I think they were, they, the legislature recognized that a, a 14% jump, which, you know, there are going to be made for that because expenses, you know, everybody's experienced inflation personally. They're trying to mitigate that, and, you know, most districts were well into their budgeting cycle, if not already done. You know, I think the particulars of how that is going to be executed is, is going to be, that's where, like Shannon went to the, to the, to the webinar to find out, well, what's actually eligible for that, you know? And, and so some of what they had suggested in, in simplest terms to start with was, was going to be problematic for us, so it may not be very beneficial to us. I'm hoping it will be, but we'll, we'll have to see.
Okay. Thank you. Bridgette?
Yes. So I have two questions, I guess. One sort of speaks to what you described really as your area, which is just, obviously we see this gap right now. How are we stepping up so we don't have to immediately go to cuts right here, but step up our district's fundraising responsibilities really, like? And then I think that one thing that I've heard is that this year's grant, this year's funds don't look great, but this could be an ongoing thing. So I'm thinking like three-year grant, five-year grants, federal grants, like that type of thing. And then also like advocacy, and I would say in that role, how can we support you? Can we support you in going to the town? Can we support you with the state, with our representatives to sort of paint the budget picture that you're seeing in a way that is translatable outside of these meetings, bigger picture-wise? So that's my first thing. And I think, I think the second thing I was thinking when I read over the whole budget as a whole is a little bit of this thing, and I'll admit to it, it happens to me myself as well, when I'm budgeting, is you have a little bit of where you sit is where you stand. And so you can sort of see where the needs are from your position. And so I noticed like there's 60,000 in a line for, for school admin and another, or for central admin and another 77 for school admin. I know some of that is probably raises and whatnot, but like, and then other lines where things pretty much stay fat, flat. Like I don't know how anyone runs a whole group of kindergarteners off of a thousand dollars a year in curricular surprise. That's such a curricularly heavy year, but by magic and whatnot, they appear to do it. But I think the point that I'm trying to make is like, when you're looking at the budget, I'd ask you also to like just be thinking and trying to do perspective taking about how you're not using an administratively centric view in doing so, if you know what I mean. I'm not saying you are, I'm just saying that can be a flaw in that I do see like big increases in some places and not in others, so just putting that out there.
So I'll, I'll talk about this, and Shannon, if you want to jump in, feel free. So when we, when we sort of build a budget, you know, certain things, you know, for example, our bus contract has a So when we, when we sort of build a budget, you know, certain things, you know, for example, our bus contract has a very prescribed mechanism for how we calculate the, the, the increase or change from one year to the next. It's actually written to the contract. We won't really have that number for another couple of, you know, probably another week or week and a half because it's dependent upon a C P I or Consumer Price Index number, and we use it, you know, the last twelve months. And so the December numbers don't come out and are available for another week or so. So that'll refine that. It's probably because we average that, that increase over the course of the year. That probably is only a partial percentage. It's going to be a few hundred dollars, that kind of difference. We have, you know, we have lines like our health insurance where we won't have the official number probably for another week or so. We're making an estimate based on earlier conversations with our insurer about how those things are, are going, which is where we've got a twelve percent increase in our health insurance costs. And that's hard on the district. That's also hard on all our employees because, you know, they, they pay their twenty-five percent, twenty or twenty-five percent, depending which plan they have. That goes up twelve percent. That's, that's directed out of their pocket, right? And for the district where we're covering either seventy-five or eighty percent, depending on which plans, you know, that, that twelve percent, that's a big number. And so we'll, hopefully, it's going to be something less than twelve percent, right? But the, and so there are a number of things where we have estimates and we're trying to do the best we can. There's some things where we know costs have risen. We review past history and say, do we need to adjust this because our actual spending has been tracking differently? So a year or so ago, we, we bumped up our legal lines because the, the reality of what was happening in our legal expense lines was, was higher than we were budgeting. And what happens, you know, you sort of set your budget and it's sort of your frame of what you think you're going to do, and then you actually live. And then stuff happens. And so you're adjusting accordingly. So most of the ones in payroll are driven by, and again, we do a level service, so maybe back up steps, talk about level service. We take a snapshot of who we are right now and, and, and and what our, you know, sort of grade and step sort of changes are, or, or our, our step and cola cost for, for our payroll people. You know, we won't have exactly the same six hundred and thirty-five employees in the three districts, you know, come July that we have right now. And so those things change. We're making our best guesses on those things. But as we go from now till, till February, when we do a hearing, you know, we're refining all those numbers. We're looking at those and we're, and we're simultaneously trying to find any efficiencies or economies we can be reflective of need. And, you know, I mean, the Comenante folks came and, and shared with us their needs, you know, there are ways in which that's not reflected yet. We're going to have to look at that and see, are there some real ads we need to do in anticipation of some grant funding that may not come through? So we're going to still refine all of those things. So there, there will be changes on a number of lines as we go through the next month. And, and so it's just better information and some of it's going to be true changes. And some of it's, you know, we need a resource in X. So it's going to be an addition to the budget, an additional expense to the budget. And we've got to find what's the offsetting thing. We've just got to set, we've got to have more offsets than, than ads because we've got a shortfall of about half a million dollars. And, and that's the work over the next few months. But we definitely consider those things and, and things like the curriculum supplies, which is, you know, crayons and whiteboard markers and that sort of stuff. We try to, you know, we make our best guess of what it's going to be. And, and we do, in good years, you know, we'll bump those up. You know, and it, it's, it's a critical thing as we budget. If we, if we know we've got, you know, a circumstance where, you know, the, the, the revenue availability is a little better, we, we then have the, the luxury of, of adding to those because those expenses do rise. I think on the advocacy, advocacy question, you know, the, the B C G is one of those places where you guys at school can be immersed when you sit down, you know, talking about how the town's pie is split up. You know, we have a certain amount and, you know, when the town gave the recommendation in, in November about, oh, it's a three percent increase, that was every department. So public safety and fire, well, fire is part of public safety, public safety, D B W, town hall, schools, regional schools, those all got three percent. If we need to, if, if the need is that in the case we make to the B C G is that we need a bigger slice of the pie, then so be it. The other thing is the town may, when the governor's budget come out, recognize they have more resources. So they may come back to us if we're fortunate and say, oh, it's, it's three point one percent, not three percent. Well, that's real money that helps us out too, right? So those are things. You know, advocacy on the state level, you know, I think, you know, we certainly go after any grants we can. Again, the sort of non-supplanting rule means you have to buy stuff that you aren't already buying. So that's one tricky component there. We do have, you know, some entitlement grants that are often driven by demographics within the district. And, and we leverage those to, to support us as best we can. I think the thing we're, we're sitting in right now, and a lot of districts like us are in the same place, is with the Student Opportunity Act, the state, as resources are available, they're funding some districts that really are struggling. And, and so the lion's share of increases in chapter seventy are, are into those districts. We're not one of them. So what they're doing is what they call, you know, sort of hold harmless aid. So like, we'll give you what you got last year, potentially plus, you know, this current year, it's sixty dollars per student. Which is not, that, that differential is what you're looking at. That's not a ton of money. It's thirty, forty thousand dollars. But again,
You're saying last year plus sixty dollars as student?
A student, right. So for the town of Amherst, you know, twelve hundred students, sixty dollars, what is that, thirty-six thousand dollars of increased revenue that went to the town. So chapter seventy goes directly to the town, then they appropriate to us. The town appropriates well above the chapter seventy number. So they sort of see that, just like they do any other revenue sources, as sort of one big giant resource to fund things. And we, and they fund us and well above that level. So, so it's really about that B C G conversation. Do we, and can we make the case for a larger slice of the pie amongst the town resources? You know, again, back to the state of the state address from the governor, I think there's a commitment by the governor to continue to fund the Student Opportunity Act. It's on a, let's say it was a seven years trajectory to get those, you know, sort of struggling districts to a higher level. Once that is sort of fully funded, then we kind of revert potentially back to a more sort of classic model of, of chapter seventy. So we might see better increases than just, you know, a, you know, thirty bucks a student or sixty bucks a student. So well, you know, that's a, a few years away, I think, but, but hopefully that. I think Irv had a question too, if you didn't notice.
I didn't. Thank you. Irv?
Yes, I, I think that, you know, just looking at the budget overall is that the guidance, our guidance, I would like to see our guidance to Doug be that we adhere to a philosophy that is always, that has been in place since I've been on the school committee, is that if cuts are going to happen, and they certainly look like they are going to happen, that they be made furthest from the classroom first before they are made anywhere else. You know, given that we have regular education and special education being over fifty-seven percent of the budget, that's always, you know, a, a target that is usually looked at for, for cuts. And I would like for us, this school committee, to at least give you guidance, Doug, that the cuts do not take place there.
I want to, excuse me, Jennifer, I, yes, but in my view, I mean, you, you gotta have administration. And I, I don't want it cut so much that people, there are not enough people to do the work, or they are so overburdened that they leave. So, yes, but.
Yeah, if I may just offer a little, so, so early this week, I, I met with the elementary principals and, and some other, you know, central office staff to start the conversation because we knew the number, you know, and, and we, we weren't, we, in years past, when we've had this sort of thing, we might have started earlier, there've been other things in the way. But, but certainly, you know, we're starting those conversations about how do we get there from here? And what has the, you know, this least disruptive impact particularly on students in, in whatever way? And, and there's a number of factors that are part of that calculation. And, and there's going to be some tough choices, I think, you know, and, and, you know, if we can think of ways to, to structure ourselves differently, that's what, you know, part and parcel of what we're going to try to do. And, and that hopefully has a, a level of impact that's, that's more moderated, you know? So it's, you know, can we think of models or structures of, of staffing that, that are a little better given where we, where we sit and, and, and where we think we're going to be this year and, and moving forward? And, you know, there's going to just be some things we have to say we can't afford to do, whatever those, and we're in that process of starting to figure out what and how we go about that.
I want to wrap this part up.
I, I guess I would just, you know, I just would like to make sure that we do everything to maintain the level of instructional quality that we have right now. And that, that we don't deviate from that unless it's really absolutely necessary. When you start intruding upon classroom instruction, on teacher availability, pairs, et cetera, you start degrading the instructional quality of the schools. And that is something we're well-known for. So to do that, in my mind, would be a negative.
I'm going to call Jennifer and then I want to say something. And then I think we should move to the capital budget. It's already eight forty-five. Go ahead.
So we have a five hundred thousand dollar shortfall. And I'm looking at the, but, on the budget book and the additions and reductions page, and you've identified thirty thousand of it. So it loses the four hundred and seventy thousand dollar shortfall, and you've got to be determined. So that's the, that's the work of the next month before the next Amherst School Committee meeting, which is February, which is when the budget hearing will be. So between now and then, you'll figure out what that is. And then will, will we, will we hear about it before the budget presentation? The, the budget, what is it called? Budget hearing? Or is that when we as a body, and then, and then we'll have another month for our March meeting to vote on it. It just feels, I, I'm sure we've done this, you know, every year, but it just feels like we don't know what's happening. We don't know where those cuts are going to be now. We're going to find out in February and then we have to vote in March.
Yes, broadly, yeah, broadly, yes. The thing that will happen when, when we are in February will be a little less specific because again, we're going to have that dialogue with both you and the, the community because that's part of the hearing process is to have the community come in. You know, and, and in years past, you know, the, that, you know, sort of roster of things is, is going to be part of your, your packet of materials. So in much the same way that we, we, you know, did the big budget book this time, we'll, we'll be much more focused just on sort of how we're, we're trying to close that five hundred thousand dollar gap. And so, you know, in, in, you know, hopefully there are things that, that are easy, like health insurance costs less. Those are nice ones because they don't mean you have to change any actual, you change a, a cost, but you don't like impact programming kind of things. And some will be, you know, programmatic sort of changes. And so we'll, we'll get those to you as early as we can. It'll probably be just, you know, that, that weekend before essentially. But that's part of the dialogue. I mean, hopefully that's out for folks to look at over those, those days. And, and that's part of what that meeting's about is to say, here's, here's what's, you know, we've, we've gone through this, you know, as a professional staff to say, here's how we think we can do this. And we think it has the, the least negative impact on a, on a, you know, all the different vectors we're thinking about. And what does the community think about that, right? And, and and then, you know, from that point, you know, we take that feedback. You know, there may be something we suggest that you guys as a body say, we're not going to vote for it. So you got to find something else. The difficulty is anything you sort of propose as a reduction will have its advocates that come out and that's understandable, right? And, and the thing is, is that, you know, if we're, if we're reducing something that's, that, you know, lessens what we do or, or alters it significantly, you know, that's, that's a painful thing, right? We, you know, we like the things we offer. We'd like to offer more things, not less things. And, and that's, that's the struggle we're going to have. And I think that's, that's the, the difficulty of, you know, it's one thing to advocate for something, it's, but we're going to need something else to counterbalance that, right? So if, if, for example, and I'm not saying that, you know, you know, if there's something that's suggested as a, a reduction, and I'm not going to pick anything at this point because I don't want to have anybody panic about anything. But let's say we pick something and it's a hundred thousand dollars, you know, of change. And, and you guys collectively say, that's, that's a non-starter for us. I'm going to want suggestions from you if possible because you'll have seen the full budget book. It's sitting there for you to, to look through and, and, and if there are things, you know, if you can offer, that would be greatly, because that again is the sort of, you're the voting body. So if there are things that you're like, I think we should change this instead of this, that's valuable feedback to us.
So you don't bring alternatives. You're going to bring your recommendations.
We'll have vetted what we, that's, as professionals, we'll have gone through all of that. And, and we may have thought as those same things. So if you suggest something else where we may be like, oh, well, we did think about that and here's what we were thinking. It may be that you guys have an idea that none of us thought of. And so we're happy to hear those. I don't want to suggest that we're, you know, all-knowing. Or can, or will consider every single other option. But, you know, we're going to think, you know, deeply and carefully about what it takes to get where we need to be. And, and again, the more, you know, news we have about things like our health insurance and, you know, those types of things that can be really low impact, you know, or no impact on actual, actual programming and, and stuff, the better. But, but, you know, with a little over five hundred thousand dollars, there's going to be, we're not having a significant drop in population to suddenly say, well, we need four fewer teachers. Now, are there things? And, and that may be something, you know, we've had a, a, you know, a, a policy of, of class size that we followed over the, the last several years. Is that something we revisit in a way that, that changes, that might shift how many staff we need? I'm not suggesting that's what we do at all. And in any way, I'm just saying, you know, our choices about some of those policies about how many kids are in, at, at, you know, potentially in a classroom at each grade level are, are part of the things that will be the, you know, potentially the trace. We're going to operate from the current policy staying as is. But if we offer certain suggestions and you're like, wow, that's really not okay, you know, is, is considering class size something? You know, I just think the, the, you know, sort of all things are on the table and, and we want to have that, that robust conversation about those things and, and those trade-offs of what are, what do we gain, what do we lose in, in these changes?
So that reminds me that just one thing that I would find very helpful in these budget books going forward is in the line items, or at least where there's the regular education and the special education, to show the enrollment for each year, the total enrollment in, you know, just whatever, whatever it is, the kindergarten. So, because I, I can see how the expenses are changing and I can see how the F D Es are changing or not changing, but I can't tell like how the staff to pupil or the cost per pupil. That would be, that would be useful if not next year, this year, next year. Then I also want to say that painful as five hundred thousand will be, it's not the fiscal cliff. I was, doesn't seem to me to be the fiscal cliff, I've been told. And I've talked about, is that at the regional level? Or you've just like flattened a, a little bit with S R funds or whatever, and it's coming next year?
Well, we, we've been trying to be strategic with use of S R funds to, to make this, this drop in funding as modest as possible. You know, and, and so I think if we hadn't, then, then that number would be decidedly more uncomfortable. But the nature of last year's budget and the kinds of things we, we, you know, took out and the level of support from S R that we put in there was, was moderated so that this year looks a little more moderated. Next year will also be. But the way to think, you know, one way to think about it is we've got four hundred thousand dollars of S R funds that are helping support this budget. When we start fiscal twenty-six, that's a gap we start with from the beginning. And, you know, the fact that, you know, we've got in the current budget, and I'm not recalling the exact number, five hundred plus thousand of, of S R funds that are supporting the current year budget, the fact that we're about five hundred thousand is reflective of that money not being available. And so, you know, even, and, and while you're still supporting with four hundred thousand, so the, the difference in S R funding is only a hundred thousand. So, you know, we're starting to make up that, that S R funding. But we'll, we'll,
Take the big hit next year.
And next year we'll have, you know, the S R funding and then the normal sort of inflationary pressure and that sort of thing. So it's, it, it's, hopefully what we've done is made the cliff sort of stretch across a couple of years in a way that, that is not quite as abrupt in the process of, of having to, to constrain to the limited resources.
Thank you. I think we need to move ahead to the capital. It's almost nine.
Is this the only conversation we're going to have about budget?
Before February thirteenth? I think, I'm sure we all have many, many other questions. I think, I'm sure we all have many, many other questions and, and maybe we can email them to Doug or Shannon and just, just to get
Okay.
I think it's fine, especially if it's particular to certain things that, that might be, you know.
It's, it's a more general question. I'm sorry. So the ESER funds presumably, I mean, there's lots of ways of thinking about it, but if you just put that aside and think about any increased programming that they gave rise to, is there a way of looking at any increases that we've done since COVID?
So in, in part with the budget for the current year, those things that had been funded expressly from ESER, you know, like, oh, we're going to fund, you know, particular mental health supports or that sort of thing, we expressly didn't fund with ESER.
Okay.
And, and some of those we didn't sustain this year. So if you look at last year's budgets, the FTE that had been tied to, to sort of ESER funds, there was a drop in staffing that way. And so some of that's there and, and we'll have a similar, you know, so this year there's not, again, the ESER funds are not directly tied to positions. There are some things that we have, have put in place that, you know, and we've used a variety of funding sources to, to try to support around mental health and, and supports for, for kids in that area. Those things, some of those are, you know, as we have our conversations, we're going to say, do we need to continue to, to preserve those? Are, are those needs still there or are they starting to fade a little bit because we're further out from the pandemic? That's part of those conversations we're having about how we, how we support the kids and, and how, whether we've got funding for it or not, we may need to persist with certain activities because we still need to support the kids.
Okay.
Okay. It's nine. I think we need to vote if we're going to keep talking, yes, for another half hour to extend our meeting by 30 minutes. Does anyone want to move that?
I move to extend the meeting by 30 minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right. So we'll vote. Aye. Vote aye. Bridgette?
Aye.
Jen, I'm sorry. Jennifer?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Can we move on to capital then?
Yeah, this will be fairly brief. And, and so what we have here is, is that Shannon and, and staff, you know, sort of put together today was based on, on capital projects that, that I put forward in, into the Town of Amherst capital planning for this year. It's for the schools, a fairly modest, a fairly modest ask. It's about $310,000. So one thing that you will notice that is not there is any technology. Spoke with our IT or Information Systems IS director and he said, I think we're in good shape. We've had good funding the last couple of years. You know, the, the state of where we're at right now is, is good. We can actually, you know, in a sense, I don't want to say yield, but, but we're able to not need that level of support. That's one of those circumstances that then allows other departments in the Town of Amherst to, to fund their projects. There are some other areas that we often in capital, because of age of the buildings like Fort River and, and Wildwood, that we routinely, routinely ask for a, a sort of standard amount of money, kind of each year, $10,000 or $15,000. Again, we've been fortunate and not needed to spend as much of that to date. And so there wasn't a need to, to make those asks. So we reduced in, in the overall ask from the schools, we've reduced the, that ask by, you know, $200,000 at least. What we do have is, you know, some investments in Crocker Farm. We're going to keep that building and so we got to do some, some work there. We've got a, an energy master plan and, and as you look at this and, and other capital projects in other districts that you may be paying attention to, you'll see that master planning process. So one of the things, you know, it's a very strong goal for, for the community to, to move away from fossil fuels and to be more energy efficient. And so one of the things that we're looking at is a, is an energy master plan. You know, the Crocker Farm school was originally built in, in 1966 and was renovated significantly about the year 2000 or so, 2001. And so those systems are getting near the end of life, those, those systems for heating and cooling and, and that sort of thing all need, you know, review and replacement, that sort of thing. So the idea with the master plan is to, is to review how we're going to approach our heating and cooling systems and other energy-related things in the building. Can we go to heat pump style? Heating and cooling systems that, you know, are, are more robust, are not using fossil fuels, are et cetera, et cetera. So that's part of what that, that is to do is to say, how do we approach this? And then we'll figure, you know, the next stage is like, all right, here's what, you know, the total of cost is, how can we, can we phase this in multiple steps over multiple years? Do we do it in one big? That'll be part of what we're discovering with that master planning process.
Or is there state support perhaps for cleaning?
Exactly. Exactly. Are they things that can be supported by an MSBA accelerated repair program? They're, they're, they tend to fund, you know, they like to fund windows and roofs and boilers. And it's like, well, boilers is like, you know, not the technology we're going to put in for heating and cooling. And yet, you know, they still, you still have backup systems that have that. So we'll look at that. They're modifying those programs all the time and, and so we'll look, look into that. But this is to frame out, hey, how do we approach this and, and keep this building functional and appropriate and, and able to control the, the, the energy as best we can. The second one on the list is cafeteria replacement, the cafetorium, sorry, curtain replacement. Curtains are expensive. You know, it's, it's 50 grand for a curtain. And part of that is because of the fire.
Is this a stage curtain?
Stage curtain, basically. So cafetorium is a cafeteria auditorium, but they have a stage and, and it has curtains. There's a fire rating that you need to meet. You can re-treat those curtains over time and, and preserve that fire rating for those, but there's a point where it wears out. So if you're sitting in JCPC and they talk about their turnout gear and the fact that it wears out, even if we're not going to fires very often, it's because you put it on, you take it off, you put it on, you take it off. The curtain goes through that same process. As you use it over time, it, it needs a replacement. So that's, that's the ask there. The next two items are, are vehicle replacements. One's a, a, a disabled access van, so, you know, for kids that are mobility impaired and particularly in wheelchairs. And, and the maintenance vehicle is for the, you know, the, the staff that we have that go around and do plumbing or electrical or HVAC work, they've got to have a van with stuff in it to do that work. And so those are those two things. And what we're looking to do with both of those, if possible, is, is shift to electric. Again, it's a town goal. They're much more wanting to, to support that. We'll do that. For the maintenance vehicle, that's much more likely. For the disabled access van, that's a little trickier circumstance. The, the way in which those are, are made is, is sort of a two-tier process. There's a sort of manufacturer like Ford or, or Chevrolet or whoever, right? And then when they get converted, that's done by sort of a third party that specializes in that. And when you have, you know, essentially the whole bottom of the car be batteries, things get, people get very nervous about, you know, putting in a bunch of stuff.
The floor.
Right? So, but it's evolving and, and a lot of communities like ours are, are really wanting those kind of electric vehicles. So it's possible that we can do electric. We'll try to, but again, the need of having something that's functional and working and available is, is what we'll do there. But again, in both those circumstances, we're going to try to lean toward electric vehicles and, and move our fleet away from fossil fuels. The last two are about just general, you know, sort of building, repair and maintenance and, and management. So we have an energy management system, so that's centrally run and has, you know, sort of computer software and controls, but it also has physical controls that are, are directed by those. So for example, if you're ever in one of the school buildings at this time of night, it starts to be noticeably cooler because we turn down the heat at four o'clock or whenever we think the building's. And so we have those controls. Those are, you know, as with a lot of things, it requires a regular and steady amount of, of maintenance and, and upgrading. The other thing with, with energy management is that with a new building coming online in a couple of years, we're going to need to make sure that our energy management system is available and, and able to be compatible with new stuff that's going to be in our new building. And then the last thing on the list is exterior door replacements. You know, doors wear out, they're expensive, they are a question, you know, they, they are about, you know, energy conservation, pest management, security and control and safety. So even, you know, even though Fort and Wildwood are really old buildings, we may need to replace a door there. And so it's, it's, it's one of those things we regularly invest in and regularly use. But it could very well be that that, you know, it might be Crocker Farm, we're not sure, you know, we kind of keep an eye on all the doors and which ones are, are getting to a place where they need repair and replacement. And so that's what that, that last item is. And so again, it's a much more modest list than years past, but I'm happy to answer any specific questions that, that people have about this. Hopefully I've kind of painted the picture of those reasonably well.
Thank you. Well, you'll post this or to the agenda, attach it or email it?
Oh, you know, did I not?
It is.
It is there now.
Oh, then, okay.
It literally showed up at probably four o'clock today because that's
Okay. So Jennifer and I will be taking that or speaking to those items at JCPC.
Yeah. And if you need more background information, we're happy to give it. But, but specifically, actually, when, when schools come, myself and/or Rupert
Oh, we'll also come.
will actually come and speak to those specifically. So you guys will just cheer us on, I guess. I don't know. But I'm happy to answer any other questions people have about, about those if you want.
Well, yes, you have a question.
I just have a really small comment, which is, I know right now there is some federal money for tax credits under the Inflation Reduction Act and then the Mass Green Works Program. And because it looked like you were doing some green things, I don't know who your grants person is or if you'd worked with Stephanie.
It's Shannon. But, but But, but we do, we definitely are in partnership with, with, with the town on, on these kind of things and we definitely try to leverage those. And so, you know, we ask for this money. If we get resources like that, then of course we can turn that back to the town and say, we're going to, we're going to ask for, for some other project later, but you've got it back. So there are times when we have that. We currently have a grant, I think it's a DERA grant. Shannon, am I right? Is it D-E-R-A? Is that right? That's going to help us both with electoral infrastructure for charging as well as the, the electoral buses. So we've got some of those that we're doing and we're going to continue to look at those and, and anytime we can leverage those and, and not use the taxpayer, well, it's still taxpayer money generally. It's just sort of
Some other taxpayer.
It's some other taxpayer. It's not, you know, in-town taxpayers all, some of them, but not all of them, right?
Can I ask whether, when you, when the district wants to move to electric vehicles, does it then forecast any change in the, to the maintenance in the operating budgets in the future for maintaining or repairing those particular vehicles, which can be?
Yeah.
I don't know, either more expensive maybe or?
I think it, it's still early in the market. I think there's still a lot of, you know, unknowns because it's not that mature yet about what that sort of lifetime cost of that. It, it seems that it could be somewhat less, but then I think the, the critical big-ticket question is, do you replace the batteries at some point or do you trade the vehicle at that point? You know, what's, you know, in, in a car, just, you know, general rule of thumb, once upon a time, it's not quite so true anymore, is that you get to about 100,000 miles, you really start looking for your next one, right? It's kind of the end of life. I think those sort of metrics around total cost of ownership and end of life and which things are worth replacing or not are really, you know, part of what everybody's trying to put their head around right now. So I think it'll play out, we'll, we'll see how it plays out over the next couple of years. I think we'll get a lot more information, but I think, you know, I think people are hopeful that that's the case, that some of those, you know, regular maintenance things are less. And we'll see what, you know, it's going to be kind of a lived experience situation.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you, Shannon, for your work and for, bless you, and for coming tonight. I think we can now move on to the sixth grade move to middle school.
Do you want me to display that document?
Sure. But let me just, so I made this document to refresh my own memory about what's been done on this over time. It's not necessarily what Doug is going to be talking about. I just offer it as a, a resource for the committee. And no one else has like weighed in on it, so if you find errors or anything, let me know. It's really just a guide to where you can read or listen to the discussions. Yeah. Go ahead, please.
I appreciate you putting it together. So what I'll share is the following. So one of the things that there wasn't time to do during this time horizon was to look at the regional agreement and whether or not a modification to the regional agreement to allow, you know, Amherst to join with sixth graders or all the other towns to join and how that might happen and how that might change assessments, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, was not something that was really explored to too much detail. And partly because at the time we started looking at this, the general rule of thumb around adjustments to regional agreements was, well, if you open it up, you got to really open it up and you have to really do a wholesale sort of soup-to-nuts evaluation of the agreement and modification and, and that sort of thing. Subsequently, the state has taken a more, I want to say relaxed, but, but a different approach and they're willing to accommodate more modest changes, understanding that, that, you know, that's a more functional way for a lot of districts to, to make some changes to the agreement that, that are helpful. And interestingly, it might have been Tuesday, it wasn't Tuesday this week. Last week, there was a, we belong to the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools. They did a, they asked some of the DESI folks that deal with, with regional agreements to come and talk through the process a little bit. So I went to a webinar where they, where they talked through some of the mechanics and some of the things that have to be in regional agreements. What I haven't had an opportunity to do is go back to them and, and quiz them on a couple of those sort of have-tos if we wanted to make, you know, some, some other adjustments that are more specific to our needs. So just to paint that picture a little bit. So one of the things that's, that's required in a, in a regional agreement is a sort of one-person, one-vote. So what that means is that the representation on the regional school committee needs to parallel the population in the member towns. And so one way that's done is through weighted voting. So right now we have, we have on the regional school committee, we have five Amherst members. We have two from Pelham and we have one each from Leverett and Schutzbury. Well, Pelham's not twice the size of Leverett and Schutzbury as far as their, you know, their, their voters. So there in, in of itself is, is not a one-person, one-vote structure. And that's a, that's a federally mandated structure. Amherst has roughly 80% of the total population of the four towns. So, you know, it, it would potentially require some adjustment to that. That's actually one that might be fairly straightforward because again, you can use sort of a waiting voted, a waiting vote mechanism to balance it out. But again, I, I, like I said, I haven't had the opportunity to sort of pose that question. So that's an example of a requirement that's in your, in your regional agreement. And if we were to try to make a modification, would they force us to make that adjustment or could we save that for another day? The question we would want to address is how would any one of the four communities add their sixth grade? How would that impact the assessment method and the, you know, the counts of students, et cetera, et cetera? So, you know, that would be the sort of core focus of the work. When you make an adjustment to a regional agreement, there's a few steps, the process that have to happen. So the, you know, you, let's say you create a series of changes you want to make. Those have to be vetted by the state. They take it to their legal counsel. They make sure it all is copacetic and, and has all the right language and inclusion, exclusion, et cetera, that is necessary. And they kind of green light it. At that point, you can then take it to the commissioner for approval. So it still requires, it, it requires the commissioner's approval. In general, if you want that changed agreement to start in July, at the start of a new fiscal year, you need to have the commissioner's approval the previous December. After the commissioner's approval to say, we're okay with this from an educational standpoint, legal's looked at it, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, commissioners, you know, got official sort of signing rights on this. Once the commissioner signs that, then during the spring, between December 31st and July 1st, you take it to your communities for a vote. And so then they have to approve that and that series of changes and it has to pass in all four communities. So that, you know, sort of speaks to a certain amount of timeline that's necessary. So from the commissioner's approval till implementation is at least a six-month window. with, you know, appropriate, uh, votes in town meetings. So it's got to get on warrants and it's got to go to the town council for review and, and that sort of thing. But your real, you know, the sort of legwork on, on, you know, building support for this is actually during the process of, of developing those changes, right? So as you go through that process of, of trying to craft what those changes are and, and interacting with the, with the department of, of elementary and secondary ed and their legal department, you know, you're simultaneously having conversations with each of your four towns to, uh, to keep them, uh, apprised and, and supportive of that and, and get their feedback about those changes and that sort of thing. And so in a lot of communities, when they go into this process, you know, they'll form a committee that involves either finance or select board members, uh, from each of the communities to kind of weigh in and provide, you know, context and perspective from, from their communities as they go along. So I think even with the, with the, um, the knowledge that, you know, more modest changes are allowable, you know, it's probably a year process at a minimum, maybe a little longer. So if we're thinking about that, uh, uh, or we want to seriously entertain a, a modification to a, a regional agreement for sixth graders at the middle school, um, to be, you know, fully middle school students, you know, we're going to need to start chipping away pretty soon is the short story.
The only vote the regional school committee has taken on this matter was to allow Amherst basically to rent space in the middle school building to host its sixth grade elementary school students. There has been no request to regionalize sixth grade and the regional school committee. I mean, I, I, I don't know why we would pursue that. I mean, there's been, I don't think any direction from Amherst School Committee to, to change, its intention about what it wants for sixth graders. It has so far always been they will remain elementary school students. We just don't have room to house them. So can we rent space in the middle school? And that's what the region has agreed to. And I don't think that involves opening the regional agreement at all. So I, I.
It does not.
Okay, so I don't.
And so I can confirm that. But what I'll offer as a counter, uh, that again, I think that in the previous rendition, when exploring, uh, or thinking about whether or not to, to go into a regional agreement, the timeline didn't work. But the, the counter I would say is it's potentially both programmatically for the students in the educational program and economically better, financially more sustainable, et cetera, if they're regional students, potentially. So that's a piece of it as well. So there's the mechanics of getting it done. There's also the evaluation of cost. So the regional agreement is very specific about the rent that can be charged. Now, there are other ways to charge the Amherst district for their students being in the middle school building, which is, was going to be a part of the agreement that, that would be, um, uh, formulated. And again, that, to your point, that doesn't require, uh, a change in the regional agreement. It does require us to create another school and to, you know, set that up with the state, to, uh, staff that accordingly with the state. So administration's an important piece, et cetera, et cetera. There's the ability to share staff, uh, and the cost of, of, you know, setup, maintenance and reporting of, of all of that, uh, is in addition to. And if they are, um, more intimately integrated with the, with the regional school district by being regional students, opportunities for shared staffing, uh, programmatic things get better. So there's, so there's some financial questions that are, um, we're taking a quick, you know, taking some level of look at. And I think there are also, you know, sort of educational programmatic aspects as well. And, and, and whether we do a, you know, we follow with, you know, follow through with what we, uh, was proposed a year ago or, or we go with a modification of the regional agreement. A critical question in, in all of that is, um, how does that play with our partners in the, in the regional? Like for, you know, for you guys as the Amherst School Committee, you care about Amherst students, right? And however, you know, a concern of, of the regional towns is, does that significantly advantage Amherst students in some way, uh, that our students don't get? So that's a, that's a piece of, of how we think about and, and, and create the programming, regardless of which sort of method we have. And, and those were things that were, you know, in the conversations around this. It may not have been expressly talked about in, in some of this. But, but, um, you know, uh, the consideration of, of how that, how that group of kids interacts with, with the building as a whole and, you know, the, the potential advantages those students may get by virtue of that are, are part of the conversation that we have to have as, as, uh, you know, members in the region, you know, whether the students are distinctly ours or not.
It seems to me before we can have a conversation with the region, this committee needs to decide whether it wishes to change direction. And because there's been an immense amount of work done already to, to, to create a sixth, elementary sixth grade at the middle school. It was just about ready to, to happen, you know, if it hadn't been for this, the news about needing a new administration, basically. So I, I think you're suggesting that we just have to go back and start all over and see if we want to make them or ask the region to let them be region, regional students. And they may say no, in which case we still have to move our sixth graders. So, so that's.
Right. Uh, what I would suggest is that, you know, I would agree that, you know, there's a tremendous amount of work that's done. It'll have to be reviewed. There's no doubt about that if we want to go with a sixth grade move. I think that we have an opportunity to look at regionalization as an option in a way that's different than was in the past. And I think it would be, my opinion is that it would be worthwhile to spend some small amount of time evaluating that, that, that option. It may be a dead end. I don't want to promise that it's, you know, something other, you know, great or not great. I think that, that, that I think, um, but I think there's, there is an opportunity because we have a different circumstance than we had before, that we might look at that question. I think it's, you know, just as due diligence, I think it's worth, worth exploring that a little bit. That's again, sort of my opinion to you guys. If you as a committee have zero interest in that, then we'll go back and revisit and, and refine this and, and review it and make sure it's, it's, uh, in, in good order. So that's what I'll offer as a suggestion there.
Jennifer?
So Sarah, thank you for this summary. It's very helpful to see it laid out. And I agree with what you've said about the votes that the Amherst School Committee has taken. But I disagree with your characterization specifically that this committee never expressed an interest in having our sixth graders become regional students. Because, and, and according to what your history officer has said, the idea that our sixth graders would become regional students was not on the table because of the regional agreement, because our, because our middle school is a, a regional, it's a, in a different district. So it wasn't on the table until this, this latest entry on your document, February sixteenth of twenty twenty-three, when the former superintendent let us know that DESI would or might allow us to make changes to the regional agreement without opening up the whole agreement. And it's still unclear to me, Doug, if the thing about changing the school committee structure, the regional school committee structure would have to happen or not. But, but I'll get to that in a second. So, um, so, and that's why we voted to delay the move to fall of twenty-five or twenty-six because at that meeting, we talked about, oh, maybe it is now an option to make our sixth graders regional students. And maybe that is something we want to consider. We didn't decide that then because there were so many, uh, many other things up in the air, like the regional agreement, et cetera. But we did decide to delay to give us the time to, to do that. And, and as your document says, we voted to delay, but we're supposed to decide in twenty twenty-four. I, I'll say that, um, the idea, the original, the, the idea of moving Amherst sixth graders to the middle school, but having them stay Amherst elementary students and having them go to school in the middle school is confusing and odd and an unusual school structure. And it would require the creation of like a sixth grade academy. And then the sixth graders in that building would need a principal. And they would like, it, it, it's just, it's, it's a, it's a, it's an unusual model. And I think it's confusing for families. And I think, I think if you asked probably most families about sixth graders moving to the middle school, they would have assumed, or they have assumed sixth graders would be attending the middle school, would be enrolled in the middle school, not be elementary students who are in the middle school building. It's, it's a confusing model. And I, I for one am, was glad to hear that we had the option of making them regional students who actually are, attend and are enrolled in the middle school. So perhaps this is, I mean, not perhaps, but this is something that this committee should discuss and, and discuss and decide what, what we think is important.
So I'll, I'll offer one thing just back to the regional agreement. So I gave that as an example. And, and I need to follow up. So there were, there were a number of things that they mentioned that like, oh, if you're in a regional agreement, and these are things that are sometimes missing from regional agreements. Because a lot of towns did their regional agreements like what we did in nineteen fifty-seven. And they haven't really touched them much since. And, and, you know, I'm not sure the last time we did it, you know, they were suggesting there's some that haven't done it since the eighties. And well, reform in ninety-three is a pretty significant change. You know, so I, I have to ask the questions like what, you know, when you sort of open this can of worms, how many worms do you have to pull out of this thing, right? And so, you know, do we have to fix certain mechanical things or not? Or which ones do we have to fix? Among the things that we're really interested in, it's like, how do we figure out a sixth grade thing, right? So I think we've got open questions there, I guess is what I'd say.
Irv, Irv, thank you.
It seems to me that if, if you're looking at a process of regionalizing our, uh, uh, sixth grade, that that's almost like a year's process. And at the me, in the meantime, time is moving on in relationship to the completion of the new elementary school. Our students have to be out. They have to have somewhere to go. So it seems to me that why not us make that decision as soon as possible as to whether we are going to, uh, are going to consider having them being regional students or are we just going to have them be sixth grade students who happen to be renting space in the middle school? We, we as a school committee need to make that decision sooner rather than later.
I agree with that. But I would say again, that it won't just be, although we make up a large part of the regional school committee, it, it won't be up to the Amherst School Committee.
No, wait a minute.
Yeah, no, we, so we can.
If we're renting space, that's what I thought we were just renting, renting space.
I'm saying if we want to have six, Amherst sixth graders be part of a regional school district. That takes the consent, I assume, of the regional school committee. And we just, we can't assume that we will get it.
Well, yeah, but, but first the Amherst School Committee has to make that decision first in order to even go to the region.
Well, I wonder if we can ask if they'd be open. I don't know. Jennifer?
I, I think the decision that needs to be made is, do we as a school committee want to pursue this?
Pursue what, Jennifer?
Sorry, pursue having our sixth graders be regional students. Sarah, you're right. It's not a decision that this body can make. But this body should decide, is this something we want to pursue? And I think we shouldn't ask the region until we decide, is this something we want to pursue? Like there's a, there's like a chicken and the egg thing, but like we have to decide if it's something we want to pursue. I think that's the decision that needs to be made.
Right. And we may need to make that decision sooner rather than later.
Can I say that Doug outlined ways in which it could be more expensive to keep, to have a school within a school? I guess that's what Summit Academy is basically in, in the high school. I guess I'd like to see the estimate of the like costs. I don't know, you know, if it, so our regional assessment would go up, I guess. So we'd get less support from the town for our elementary? I, I don't know. I mean, there, right, it shifts, there are a lot of implications. And I mean, like even if we, from an academic, purely an education standpoint, we said, yeah, this, it would be great to have the sixth graders part of a middle school because that's actually typical six, seven, eight. But, um, you know, is it really practical? Is it affordable? I guess I, I want to know the pros and cons as best they can be estimated at this point. Bridgette?
Yeah, I would just say also from an educational standpoint, like our middle school uses such a highly valued educational model of having the students move with the teachers and having the teams follow. So I think there'd really need to be a good look into the pedagogical implications as well.
I, I just would like to point out that, um, we are, we don't have unlimited time. Our time is decided by the, uh, building of the new school and when that new school is, is ready and available. When that occurs, our sixth graders have to, there are some sixth graders going to have to go someplace. And so what I'm wanting to say is we need to have a time marker that says, hey, when that, when that school, new school is available, these decisions not only have to have been made, but everything that needs to be done in order to accomplish whatever decision we have, has to also be in place.
Let me just ask, Deb, do you have anything?
Yeah. Not quite sure how to bring it up, but obviously there's reasons for and against. And one of the things that we haven't mentioned is the, um, turnover and state of concerns around student safety in that building. So how Amherst families might feel about that might be an important part of what we consider should we go there.
I will say that I remember, and Jennifer may remember from the conversation with families around this move, just even physically to the middle school, there was a lot of concern about how the sixth, whether the sixth graders would be interacting with the seventh and eighth graders or they'd be in a completely separate wing or what. So I, I agree that is, was and probably would continue to be a big concern. It's also nine thirty, so we either need to stop.
Let me offer one, one quick thing.
Vote another half hour.
So what I would suggest is the following. So there's mechanics questions about the regional agreement that, uh, you know, about what has to be, you know, modified or changed or, or brought up to speed or compliance, I should say. I, those can, I can get those answers fairly quickly, I think. And I think that the other thing that we can look at, I think in, in essentially, of course, the next month before your next meeting is, is, um, at least a rough, not, not a very precise, but a rough cut of sort of the financial impact. And whether we can make good estimates of that. Because I think those are going to be, you know, if it's clearly not advantageous, you know, financially for either district, um, uh, you know, that, that may decide for you in, in some way and sort of rule something out versus not. But I think that gets us moving and I think to, to, to the point, you know, both just in, in the political process of a regional agreement change and the timing that's necessary with state, you know, the sooner the better. And so I do think that over the course of the next couple of months, you know, a clearer direction about which one, if it reverts to the, the plan that was in place a year ago, um, then the question becomes when? You know, how quickly? And if it's the other, then, then it's a little more complicated than that clearly. That in, I think if you think in terms of a change to the regional agreement, that almost dictates the fall of twenty-six because I think it'll just take that long to do the regional agreement work. So again, it sort of, if you, if you explore that one in a full way, um, that may sort of set the timeline as well. So, uh, I think there's a few things we can do in the short term, uh, to, to start to frame this a little bit for all of you and ourselves internally to, um, you know, again, we may look at the regional agreement questioning and it's the most absurd thing we've ever heard, you know? I don't want to presume it is good or, or not good. But I think it's, um, you know, the, the, the question is worth posing at this point. There's a few things we can kind of ask in, in the short term that can be really beneficial to, to guiding you guys about decisions and next steps.
And can I say the, the possibility that one or more of the towns would vote down the revised agreement just a month before the fiscal starts and three months before the students are supposed to go there is, is horrifying.
That's why you do the, I mean, that's sort of like our budgets too. But I mean, you, you do the political legwork ahead of time so that that's, the likelihood of that is much, much less. And I think that's the, that's the risk any towns that you either want to create a region or want to get out of a region or, or wanting to change their region, they all struggle with that same thing. You got to do that, uh, groundwork in each of the communities and, and to, to make sure you're getting feedback from everybody and building whatever changes you make in a way that they can get support everywhere.
Jennifer?
Doug, who, who is actually responsible for the regional agreement? Like who actually signs it? And, and I guess my question is like. And, and I guess my question is like, who, where would this ownership take place of suggesting changes to regional? Is it a municipal thing? Is it a district thing? Like, is it the superintendent? Is it town, like who?
So technically, you know, the person that signed it are the town officials. So select boards and in Amherst's case, the town council. That's who technically signs it. And so, you know, in, in most communities, when they were going to change, they're partnering with those folks. Most, most of the regionals don't have a town council. They're generally all, you know, select boards and, and that sort of thing. So they're technically, I think, you know, this is one of those circumstances where I think as a, as a district, there's a piece of this that we kind of carry. And it's, you know, it's easier to, to edit than to draft from whole cloth. And so we have to do a little bit of the whole cloth work, I think, as, as, uh, sort of good stewards and, and then, you know, be partnering. As we get more specific, we start to partner much more intently with the, the members, to, to, to engage them and build that, that political process. But I think we're going to, you know, yeah, technically it could be a thing that, you know, the four towns call each other up one afternoon and say, hey, let's get together and do this thing. They could do it, you know, without the involvement of the regional school committee or, or the, you know, member, members in other ways. But the reality is that we'll probably have to carry a lot of the, the heavy lifting early and, and then be partnering with them and not, you know, obviously trying to be attuned to, to, uh, that political process and the needs of each of those four communities and, and in that, in that work.
I have one suggestion and it'll be quick. So I think that both Irv and, Irv had a good point about timing and Sarah, you had a good point about, um, I don't remember, but, so I just want to.
Well, thank you.
So the thing with timing is like Doug said that like if we want this to be enacted in July, so let's say July of '26, which is the very latest it can be enacted, it has to be submitted by December of '25. And so right now, we're in January of '24. So I just want to suggest that Irv and Sarah, as the chair and vice chair, kind of lay out the timing and figure out when we need to fill in, what steps we need to take and when we need to do all that stuff so that we can, that we can get everything done in time.
Happy to do that.
I, I, I would agree with that, Jennifer, except that, uh, there's, it seems to be another step that we need to do. Or, or, and we make, we need to make a decision is, do we wish to go that route?
Well, that can be part of your timeline.
I think it's a what-if time, I mean, a what-if timeline. Like in order for this even to be a possibility.
Do we want it to be a possibility?
I think we need to decide, we need to figure out when we would need to answer that question so that we have enough time to make it happen if we want, want to. So, yes, I, I mean, Irv, Irv and I, but I think working with Doug, who's got the, um, best insight about the regional agreement maybe and what's involved, we could work together on how to work that into agendas over the next months.
Yeah, and as I suggested, I think, you know, some of those base questions, you know, about rough cut of financial impact and, and sort of, you know, how complic, you know, even though the state says, oh, we're, we'll entertain more modest changes to your regional agreement, sort of, what does that really mean? Answering those two questions in the, in the next, you know, couple of weeks is going to be pretty critical. And, and, you know, I think is useful because I think then and, and, you know, if, if, if I can get that information to you by the February meeting, then you guys can, can be much more, um, directive to me and, and yourselves about sort of what's, what's next.
Okay, then let's put that issue to bed for now. It is getting late, but can we either sort through or at least find out if there are any warrants to approve?
There are warrants. It's your call.
Well, how do members feel about staying another 15 minutes? You look unhappy.
I need to use the restroom.
Okay. Do you mind doing that while Jen, Jennifer reads the warrants? Okay. Jennifer, take it away.
I, Jennifer Shaw, authorized by my signature payables in the amount of $544,171.77 for payroll dated 12/27/2023. I have several of them. I, Jennifer Shaw, authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of negative $1,255.71 payroll on November 15th, 2023. I, Jennifer Shaw, authorized by my signature payables in the amount of $65.67 for payroll on, in, on dated 1/2/2024. Three more. I, Jennifer Shaw, authorized by my signature payables in the amount of $232,777.96 for the warrant dated 12/29/23. This includes general fund expenses of $119,579, revolving fund expenses of $22,132.19, grant fund expenses of $31,327.38, gift fund expenses of $1,390.94 and other fund expenses of $58,348.45 for facilities. Two more. I, Jennifer Shaw, authorized by my signature payables in the amount of $524,336.75 dated 1/10/24 for payroll. And last one, I, Jennifer Shaw, authorized by my signature payables in the amount of $450.74 for payroll on January 24th, 2024. That's it.
We're not there yet? You pay in advance? You said January 24th, 2024.
I did. I don't, that's a good question. I don't know.
We weren't released the checks until the 24th?
Thank you.
And while I have the microphone, I will move that we accept the following grant, League of Women Voters #1437 to Support League of Women Voters Civic Grant Award for Tim Austin in the amount of $2,000.
Sorry, that was a motion? So we need to, need to, I will.
Second.
Bridgette will second. Okay. Let's vote on that. Do you accept? Yes, okay. Jennifer?
Yes.
Bridgette?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Deb, would you like to vote aye on accepting a grant from the League of Women Voters for approximately $2,000?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. All right. I know it's late. I, we're just about done. I want to ask, with regard to agenda planning, our next meeting is this budget hearing. Do we also have a regular meet? I don't understand how, how these two things happen. We have a regular meeting after that? And how long is the budget hearing? Or does it start earlier?
It's your call.
Yeah, it's your call.
My call, okay.
So, you know, we want to, I, I think it's, it's, one way to think of the hearing is that it's, it's a bit like public comment. And so it depends on how many people sort of show up and want to talk about things related to the budget because it is an opportunity for the public to provide you, you know, input and feedback. So it can go on a bit depending on, on what's there. And given that, you know, we're likely to have things that people care about and don't want reduced from the budget or things they want to advocate for, et cetera. So, you know, you want that to be the early part of the meeting. And, um, I'll have to look at past agendas. I want to say about an hour, hour and a half, but I can't remember for sure.
For the hearing? Is there a presentation at the start? Or it's just?
Yeah.
By you or Shannon?
Right.
Thank you. Jennifer.
I, I, I don't, I don't think it's been as long as an hour, hour and a half. But I, Sarah, I would suggest you check out the town charter because I think there's parameters in there about how long, like that the public comment session has, section has to last as long as the presentation. So check out the charter.
Yeah, that's right. There's an equal time sort of clause as part of that. But, but then there will be other things, you know, like this regional agreement thing we were just talking about. You know, we'll, we'll want to be on there, but probably not a ton of other stuff that you want to pack into that agenda.
You said not a ton of other stuff?
I would guess not because I think the, you know, the budget hearing part will be most of your, your time, I think. Would be my guess.
Okay. All right, in that case, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Who would like to do that?
I'm moving adjourned.
Second.
All right. Irv?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Bridgette?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Thank you. We are adjourned at 9:00.